I'd like to call the board. School Board Work Session for October 6, 2014.
For the board members who are present, please respond. Mr. Sternman, Ms. Gray, Mr. Bullen, Ms. Taylor, Mrs. Harrison-Hammond, Dr. Jones, Mrs. Pinkley, Ms. Larson, Mr. Coleman, Mr. Cherry, and Matt Abbot, if you want to. And let the record reflect that we have been joined by our student, Montana McGurdon. Dr. Beck, would you like to introduce the student?
Mr. Chairman and Board Members, I am pleased to recognize Montana McGurdon. Montana McGurdon was born in Charlottesville, Virginia. Moved to Richmond at the age of two. Montana experienced his primary years at summer here at elementary school. Attended Bushawn and Thompson Middle Schools. Although always a curious child, Montana entered high school without having a clear idea of what he wanted to do. Going to Armstrong became an amazing experience. Last year, Montana solidified his desire to enter the STEM field, astrophysics to be specific. He participated in Armstrong's various STEM initiatives. He participated in the University of Richmond Accounts Program, as well as University of Richmond Science on Saturday programs. He applied for a competitive internship which allows high school students to conduct university-level research and was awarded one of the coveted internship spots at the University of Richmond. For this, Montana conducted high-performance supercomputing computational chemistry research on multi-centering bonding with a focus on silicon. His outstanding research allowed him the opportunity to apply to present at the Molecular Education Research Consortium undergraduate chemistry conference at Bucknell University. He was one of only four high school students selected to present his research findings at this national conference. Being the first Armstrong student to receive a paid internship in over a decade, Montana exemplified Armstrong's model of making them possible, possible. Moving forward, Montana intends to exemplify this year's model of inspiring excellence by attending University of Richmond UVA to acquire his bachelor's degree in astrophysics. His long-term goals are becoming research professor so he can inspire and help other young STEM-minded students from impoverished backgrounds to discover their potential in becoming contributing members of society. I personally congratulate Montana for its excellent work and high academic achievement. I also like to say congratulations to the new and developed Armstrong students for a five of them starting for the season. And it's a huge win this past weekend. Against one of the schools you are, I guess, has never or may not have beaten in a long time. So right now, it looks like you're representing the academic side. You have outstanding athletics going on this fall. Congratulations.
I know it's his point is. Way better than there, sure. There we go. Okay.
Mr. Chair, let the record reflect that you've been joined by Mrs. Taylor, so you do have a board member.
Okay, next one.
Is there anyone here that needs interpretive services this afternoon, this evening? Yes. Yes. And let the record reflect that we've also been joined by Mrs. Pinkley. Mr. Chair, at this time, I only have one change to the agenda, and that is to remove students from clothes. Removed by Mr. Sternman and seconded by Mr. Bullen, all in favor? Any extensions, any opposed? The agenda has been adopted as amended. The next item is public information. We do have several people who have signed up in advance, Mr. Chair. What is your pleasure?
It is obvious tonight that we have a large turnout to speak during the public information portion of our agenda. The total time allotted for public information is thirty minutes. Some people are here as part of our group. I would encourage you to have representatives speak for the group. When they come forward and state that they're speaking for the group, they will have five minutes. Individuals have three. But again, if everyone can be cognizant of the fact that we do have thirty minutes time for public information. So. And clerk.
For those persons who have signed up in advance, I will call your name. When you come forward, please state your name again for the record. Persons speaking before the board are not allowed to engage in personal attacks of anyone, campaign for public office, promote private business ventures, use profanity above the language, and when due, I state you hold all applause. Catherine Rivera.
My name is Catherine Rivera. Good evening, members of the board. I am a teacher at J.D. Trudy Elementary, and I am here concerning the principal, Principal Darby. Our school has entered priority status this year. After two years of decline from test scores, our situation is and is not unique. Reed was unable to escape the statewide trend in the 2012-2013 school year. The state saw massive declines after the change in assessments. In the 2013-2014 school year, the Commonwealth of Virginia went from thirty-six to twenty-two fully accredited school districts. Reed was not alone in seeing two years of declines. What makes our school exceptional is that our principal is in his third year. U.S. Department of Education has forced Virginia to strictly interpret their guidelines, meaning that the school district must take action promptly rather than at the end of this year. We have come out tonight in droves to present our case for why this decision to remove Principal Darby is not the best course of action for our children or our school. Mr. Darby has significantly increased school morale, outreach to parents, and collaboration with our community. His relationship building with children, parents, and staff has undeniably improved our learning environment at Reed. We entered this school year fully aware of the student achievement challenges we face, but because of Mr. Darby's leadership, we entered it with the best morale our staff has seen and more confidence than ever in what our children can achieve. Real change takes place in more than two years. It has begun. Don't vote to stop us in our tracks now. It is developmentally inappropriate for our students. The removal of a well-supported leader has already added an immense amount of anxiety to the staff at our school. Had the superintendent actually believed Darby's removal was necessary, he could have done that at the end of last school year when we saw our test scores. Please hear us now. This community has come out to be heard. It is your duty to listen to us. We have a vast amount of proof that Mr. Darby needs to stay in his position. Thank you.
Please be reminded to hold your applause. Thank you. Also, speakers, could you please speak a little slowly because we do have an interpreter? Deborah Vaughn. Deborah Vaughn. Tawanda Jeffries. Tawanda Jeffries. Adrian Riley. Adrian Riley. Carleen Mullins. Carleen Mullins. Mr. Chair, let me ask, concluded the list of speakers who signed up in advance.
Okay. Is there anyone else who would like to address the board tonight? Yeah, if you would line up those who would.
Then we ask that you sign in and state your name. Thank you.
Thank you, Governor Lord. My name is Chris McCann. We are attorney for our government of Baltimore and Philadelphia. And we have been retained by Mr. Darby since he was assisting in the presentation of his information this evening. As I'm sure you're aware, it's on the agenda tonight, the elementary community identified priority school. And Mr. Darby has asked that I come and just speak briefly about the legal ramifications of that designation. As you know, priority schools are federally entitled to receive school improvement grants under the Elementary Secondary School Act. But in order to get that money, they have to do certain things. Under the federal rules, strictly interpreted to the four turnaround models, to require a closed school, to require replacing principals. However, Virginia historically is wisely, I might add, has permitted some slightly illegal rules to allow the application of the term turnaround principals. And these turnaround principals have the same goal as the turnaround model, and that is simply to dramatically increase the outcomes of students as those priority schools. One of the most important turnaround principles expected in this case is that the school must provide strong leadership. And they can do that in two ways. They can replace the principal for, and here I'm quoting from the Virginia Department of Education's Priority Schools Manual, they can also put in a leader. They can choose not to replace the principal by demonstrating to the State Education Agency that the current principal's track record in improving achievement has the ability to turn the school around. Now, in making that designation, the manual also advises that one look towards the approach that has the greatest potential to dramatically improve outcomes for the school students. And as I'm sure you'll hear from many of the people here this evening, the person that is in a position to do that is Mr. Darby. He has the greatest potential to dramatically improve outcomes at Reed Elementary. And with only a minute left, I'm just going to give you a few very many examples that I apologize of his track record in improving achievement. He's been an administrator for over thirteen years. He's been a principal since 2000. At Ingleside Elementary, he took over after a very successful administrator and then managed to increase on success. He had a 100% SOL pass at trade and write. Then he took over at Grandy based on that success. The superintendent in Norfolk and chief academic officer said, "We need you to go to Grandy." He did it, had a great track record there, ordered a lot of new initiatives. He's doing the same thing. Yes, thank you. He's doing the same thing at Reed. He has a number of new initiatives in place that he's working. We've made improvements that need to be made, but as was already mentioned, there are external factors, as well as the district team, that he needs to overcome and he needs the time to do it. So I would simply ask that the board look at the law and consider who is in a position to most dramatically improve the outcome. I think we see it's Mr. Darby. Thank you very much.
Let the record reflect, we've been joined by Mrs. Pinkley, Dr. Jones, and Ms. Moore.
My name is Vincent Darby. I'd like to first recognize that my staff, the community members, family, and educational partners that are here with me today. Could they stand and be recognized? After seventeen years of educating students in the city of Norfolk, nine years as a principal, twelve years as an administrator, I answered the call to come to Richmond. And after two years of being in the city of Richmond, I received a phone call stating that I would be replaced. The phone call stated to me that I would be replaced because of declining scores, the fact that our school had entered into priority. Again, that particular day, I was just shattered, thinking that the work that we were doing at GH Reed had just begun. I just want to point out for the board and members that are here to understand again that when I looked at the reasons for me being replaced, I recounted all of the time that I spent in education, all the things that I wanted to do. And I really find that two years simply does not afford me or has afforded me the opportunity to do any of those things. I'm dedicated to the students at Reed, to the families, and to my staff to continue to work. I shared with our superintendent that I believe his options to remove me, or the option to remove me, was not the best option for our students. I shared with him again that I had over fifteen years' experience as an educator, fifteen years' experience as a school administrator. I'm wondering who they would consider to replace me. Richmond is really struggling in terms of looking at replacement. There are two interim positions right now in elementary school. I think this will have a tremendous effect on the city of Richmond in terms of recruiting. Imagine people hearing that a principal was replaced after only two years of service. Imagine those individuals now wanting to apply for the city of Richmond.
Thirty seconds.
I would simply suggest to you that the option for me to remain is not only an option for now, but an option for later. It would speak to our community, and it would really assure the people that Richmond is a good place to come and work. And so I ask you tonight, to the board, that you would consider the fact that I outgrew everything and came to Richmond to work for you and the students.
Aye.
Thank you. My name is Gladys Tucker, and I need to speak fast. These scores here are from Enrico. My son, Kian Little, I'm his legal guardian, spent three and a half years in the Enrico school system. However, it took the ninth district, Mr. Darby, to get him the services he needed in IEP. I have a stack of maybe five hundred papers, and I emailed Dr. Leonard some of them, so that you all can see for yourselves what Enrico did. In addition to that, he lived, he was born in the eighth district. He lived briefly in the first and the sixth district. He went to DC and came back to the third district. So that means that all of y'all are responsible, including Enrico. And I have a list, a whole stack, that I not only plan to send to the Department of Higher Education, the governor. But until my story is heard, how Mr. Darby rescued my son, who is sick in the hospital right now because him and Mr. Darby have a football thing going. His team has won repeatedly against other teams as a result of the morale that's at GH Reed right now. So to sit up and say that you don't understand? I think everybody needs to seriously think again. Because I've got some information for all of y'all if you want to take the time to look. I don't have time to say the speech that I wanted to say, but what I will say is that everybody will see what Enrico is doing. These are straight Fs. And they passed my baby to the fourth grade. So I just want everybody to know that. The SOL, this is SOL, but you see, Enrico don't say "Enrico school system" on here. So for you to sit up and say, "Mr. Darby is doing a good job," well then guess what? Think again. Because I've got the paperwork to prove that he's doing a good job for my son, and I've got the paperwork to prove what Enrico was doing for about three and a half, four years. I think all of y'all, if you have time, and my daughter would like to say something because she was a student at GH Reed. She's in Navette Student Partnership for the Future, and this is Lakeia McLean. Thank you so much.
Do you have to read my name?
I'm sorry.
Can I read my name?
Please.
My name is Lakeia McLean. I'm in kindergarten, from kindergarten to fifth grade, and I honestly don't think that it's due to Mr. Darby's fault. I, to me, it's depending on the kids. If the kids don't learn, and they don't want to listen, it's just him. It doesn't have to do with the principal. The principal is there to help us and push us forward. They can do all they want, and at the end of the day, if the kids don't listen, it's not his fault. And to me, if Mr. Darby leave, it would really hurt my mother's feelings because he looks up to Mr. Darby, he looks forward to seeing him every day he goes to school. He looks forward to getting an encouragement and getting all the abilities done just to prove to Mr. Darby that he can and he will achieve. So I honestly think that Mr. Darby should stay. That's your girl, Pina.
Let the record reflect that we've been joined by Ms. Larson, and we ask again, please sign in as you step up to speak. Thank you.
My name is Coleman Frye. I've been a resident of Virginia for over twenty-five years. I migrated from New York. And basically, I've been having my children and grandchildren attend Reed. And I've had no issues at Reed until this time. The SOLs have fallen tremendously, and I don't hold Mr. Darby accountable. Who I do hold accountable are the people that are over Mr. Darby. I go to the school to pick my children up, my grandchildren, and I was asked to sign up. I look up at this simple clock that's on the wall, and I notice it was out of time. I look at another clock, and I notice that clock is out of time. I then say, "How can you educate these children if you don't have a working clock? Do we hold Mr. Darby responsible for that?" I then go to pick up my grandchildren another day. It's raining. We enter the building, and I notice in the building that the computers in this one classroom are from the seventies. Do we hold Mr. Darby accountable for this? I then turn around, and I look, and I see the growth of minorities coming into the school. Do we hold Mr. Darby accountable for that? But we hold him accountable for the SOLs, but we don't hold him accountable for the board giving resources to the minorities that are taken away from the children of the classes. Right now, based on what I've seen so far, we have approximately two hundred, roughly, minorities in school now that have a language barrier. They receive special attention. I then turn around and do the simple math, and there's forty-five teachers, roughly, and I divide that into it. And here we are with four children in each classroom. And we're teaching the children, and we're trying to teach the minorities at the same time.
Thirty seconds.
We're losing out. And then, after that, I then turn around, and I just look at the overall environment, the educational boards. Everything's outdated. You can't hold Mr. Darby accountable. We need to stand up and hold ourselves accountable before we hold someone else accountable. Thank you.
I'm the new school board. My name is Kimberly Evans. And I'm a parent of a student at GH Reed Elementary School. I came up to speak today about the scores and the removal of Mr. Darby. I understand that our score, our test scores had dropped, but overall, all of the test scores had dropped for those years. To remove our progress, and you all don't see the progress because you're not in the schools with us every day, with the children. It's a bridge, a bridge, thousands of beginning and an end. He is our beginning. To show us a bigger picture in the end, that y'all will see that he is a help. He has did lots of things in the school, but I would be the first to say that if I did not see progress as a parent, I would be the first to say, "Let him go. Let's do a change." Change is good in some instances. But with children, we are giving them too much change, and that causes them to fail. To remove Mr. Darby at this time, to me, would not be a good idea as a parent for children, and then to bring in all new faces, new people, new this, new that. If the school board thought it necessary to remove him, as the teacher said when she was speaking, I felt that they should have did that in June. Then the children would not have recognized him in September when they came back to school. So if the gentleman spoke to us to tell us about this turnaround to try to get the school raised up higher, well, even if they decided to do this turnaround, then why can't we keep what we already have in place? The progress we already have made, that we have seen that has been made, why can't we keep this going? And then, the turnaround turnaround and continue to help us continue to do what Mr. Darby has set in place. And if that is possible, then we know as a school, as parents, as teachers, that we will see by the results, the scores will go up. But we have to keep things like the ill to see if we can get to what you all want to see. Because we have saw a change. We do see process. We see a progress in our process at the school with Mr. Darby. So we just ask that we are allowed to keep him so that we can also show y'all with the numbers what we have achieved every year. Thank you.
Good evening, school board members. I'm Dr. Beckon, our school board member over here on the staff. My name is Mary Horsley, and I'm a teacher. This is my eleventh year with Richmond Public Schools. I teach special ed. And I'm also an adult with Asperger's syndrome. So if I start talking too much, just tell me. Or if I get too loud, just tell me. But I wanted to stand up here to tell you about Mr. Darby. I mean, you know, he's in his third year. First year, you know, an administrator can't do much. As they're coming in, they're getting to know people, they're getting to know the staff, and they're getting to know the kids. But by third year, it's beginning to become a group, and becoming a group, a village, in order to teach the children of the GH Reed community. And in August, we had a three-day retreat with the leader and me, a program by Spew and Covey. It was a wonderful time. It was a time of understanding ourselves. I saw a lot of changes in Mr. Darby. I saw him then as a compassionate, caring individual, someone who you could go to, you could go to if you needed help. I've been out for a few days because of surgery, and he seemed to really understand, understand my problems and understand my autism. And as also, he's beginning to understand more about our students and their needs. I'm just asking you, you continue letting us grow as a community, a school, and not treat us as the new education money adventure where people are going to start investing into public or charter for-profit schools. We are not for profit. We are public. We are a village. And we're here to teach our children. And this is our village over here, the staff, the parents, and the children, and the administration of GH Reed. Thank you.
My name is John Lewis. I'm representing Blue Richmond as the director of the nonprofit. I'd like to first say that it's auspicious tonight that I've come here on this Monday night to represent under two hats. And some would find it coincidence, but it just so happened the night that I was going to promote some very talented young folks. It was the same night that I wanted to defend a leader that promotes some very talented young folks. I'd like to start with the individuals behind me. Now, I've had the opportunity to work in Richmond Public Schools in one capacity or another for over twelve years. And some of the students behind me in the Richmond Urban Conservation Corps working with Kenpo Community and Mosby Community. I had the opportunity to teach in elementary school and to see them now and to be working with them now and over the summer is really a blessing. They have strived to make great leaps and bounds towards a greatest achievement. And I call them model citizens because model, I'm using the term in a sense of play, unmolded play. Now, they have a long way to go. But with our tutelage and the man standing behind me, Art Burton's tutelage, we can find time and energy to put into these children because they have the potential for success. And without that, they may not be able to succeed without that reasoning and that belonging and that need. And we have it here. We've recently had the opportunity to partner with Kenfolk Community. And they have the children, students, excuse me, not the children, the students and the youth have cleaned up Mosby Court. And what we're asking tonight is for you to recognize their accomplishments, but also recognize the potential that lies in their future. That we have a long way to go and we need support in the form of resources and acknowledgement that these youth are our future. And without your support, they cannot continue on. I'm also here in another capacity because during the five years that I've worked in public schools, I worked at G H Reed Elementary as a reading coach, a prevention specialist, and a steward of a garden. Now, during the time before I, before Mr. Darby's reign as principal, we had setbacks just trying to get community involved in the community engagement efforts focused on community gardens. That's what the Conservation Corps mainly focuses, community gardens and community cleanup and stewardship. I had the opportunity to see the other side of, not poor management, but the other side of how a system is not equipped or how a system is inept in trying to get parents and community out to do something that is positive and reinforces knowledge and pro-social activity in the community. Then Mr. Darby came. Mr. Darby not only accentuated the things that I put forward as recommendations for the Reed Garden, food security activities, and events surrounded around obesity prevention, but he allowed the school to grow in a green space more than it's ever grown before. He has advocated community engagement and parental involvement activities that have brought parents in in droves. And you can see behind me that it's working. I've been in many schools in my, in my time in Richmond and in Reno. I have not seen an outcome or a turnout like this. I've seen people downing principals and saying, well, they're ready to go because they're not communicating with you. This man that stands behind me has communicated and made sure to become a part of the community, but not just that, a family member. That should be a longstanding one because without those extra years and a second chance to bring scores up, then he has not proven himself worthy to the name of principal. I ask that you give him a chance, the same that you would give our students and our youth a chance. Because without the leaders, without the Art Burton's, without the Vincent Darby's, without the John Lewis's and the many teachers that stand, that I stand on their backs and educators that I stand on their backs, there's no way we can raise our community and there's no way that we can grow our youth. I ask that you take this in consideration. And instead of seeing it as a last recourse or a, excuse me, a final recourse, I ask that you see it as a warning. Because the rest of the schools in the school district have fallen victim to redistricting and SOL non readiness. And I ask that you take into account that there are children that I teach in elementary school that are gonna grow up into young adults that are gonna be ready and successful to take on the world. But without leaders like that man standing behind you, it is impossible to do so. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. Dr. Bedden, my name is Art Burton and I'm the steward of Kenfolk Community. And I am the director of the Richmond Urban Conservation Corps. Kenfolk Community was founded with two objectives that the community, two mandates from the community. One, they wanted organized activities for the children in Mosby Court that would support education and community, improving quality of life. And two, the community wanted a way to get out of public housing. And that is what my work is about in Mosby Court. It's about providing young people opportunities and children opportunities and providing working opportunities for the Mosby Court community. I'm here tonight about to talk to you about an opportunity that I've been really trying to reach out to the administration and members of the board, some members of the board for quite a long time. The Richmond Urban Conservation Corps is founded by members primarily from Armstrong High School and Mosby Court Middle, excuse me, MLK Middle School. And at Armstrong High School, there is the Career Training Center, which the Workforce Investment Board puts, has funded to the tune of one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. There are currently, to my knowledge, about twenty kids who participate at the Armstrong Career Training Center. Kenfolk Community has twenty-five kids, young adults, who have actively been involved for over a year. I have another cohort of kid, twenty-five more who will start on Wednesday. And I have another cohort behind that of twelve that want to join on November the fourth. I've been in contact with the Workforce Investment Board. And they have said to me, Art, if you can get the Richmond Public School System to agree, we will give additional dollars to Richmond Public School System and the Kenfolk Community to support the urban agriculture and conservation and environmental stewardship program. So that your kids can continue to receive the stipends that you provide, that you can expand your program, so that these, so that these young people can continue to have the opportunity that's been provided. And I have diligently reached out to you guys about that opportunity. But as of yet, I've yet been able to be able to have a meeting. So I came down here tonight and I asked the young people to come down here tonight because quite frankly, we are past the place where I can do this alone. And I told them that I need them to support me and I need you guys to support us as well. Because the truth of the matter is, this entire effort is being funded out of pocket by three for-profit businesses. This summer alone, we expended over ten thousand dollars in providing stipend for this youth. To this day, we have ceded over thirty thousand dollars into the Mosby Court community. And I'm very proud of these young people for the work that they do, for their willingness to take it on. And I'm not here talking about taking a dollar of the original dollars from Richmond Public School System. I'm talking about additional dollars and opportunities that could be had. And so I know you guys are busy reorganizing, changing, letting folk go, hiring folk. But in the midst of all of that, they still do not forget that there are communities that have needs, that need resources, that need opportunities. And quite frankly, I believe that you will never fix what's wrong with Richmond Public School System until you fix what's wrong in some of these communities. And that's what we stand for. And that's what we're trying to achieve. And I would like for your support in that and I would like to engage in that conversation about how we could make that happen. And I would like for y'all to urgently address it with some urgency. And I would now like for y'all to hear from just some of the members of Richmond Urban Conservation Corps. Thank you.
My name is Angela Janetti and I'm from Armstrong High School. I am a member of the RUCC. And we are dedicated to the community, developing and promoting a cool asset. I am here to tell you about some of the things that I have been a part of in the RUCC. I spent three days in Shenandoah National Park. And I work in Richmond local national park. I spent eight days in Yellowstone National Park. On our day, it snowed so much. I saved buses while passing our dogs and understanding those. We put, we put down logs so people could stay on the trails. And I was the youngest, first one to climb the top of a mountain.
Hi, my name is Nina Burden. I'm a member of RUCC at Armstrong High School. I'm fourteen years old and I've been a member of RUCC for years. Being on RUCC is fun. It helps my neighborhood. We do gardening, we clean house by me, they have working experience, like the national park. On this trip, we managed to prepare for the climate working and tracking wildlife. The things we did at National Park, we went into the woods and searched for cameras and we changed the memory card. Then, after we changed all the memory cards that was in the camera, we went back into the national park and we looked at pictures of the endangered fox. The pictures were great for you, they were deer stalks, turkey, and wolves. On my trip back home, I was hoping to do it again.
Hi, my name is Juanita. I'm a member of RUCC. I attend Armstrong High School. Some of the things that we do in RUCC, we help our community. We also plant gardens, go on trips. Some of the trips I went to Shenandoah. I went to the Shenandoah then because it was an exciting experience. We camped out in the woods and I saw a lot of deer. That opportunity, opportunity prepared me to open up to other careers. I hope that this corporation can stay another year.
Team Attention! Ray West. Who are we?
RUCC.
We are?
Kenfolk.
Thank y'all.
Good afternoon, Superintendent Bedden, School Chair, Coleman, Vice Chair Larson, and other members of the school board. My name is Charlotte Hare. I am a business and information technology teacher, currently serving as president of the Richmond Education Association. October is National Bullying Prevention Month and Richmond Public Schools Safe Schools Month. Our theme this year is school safety, what can you do? So my question to you tonight is, so what can you do to make schools safe? I am sure that you know that bullying has become one of the greatest threats to school's safety. We try to protect our children and our students from it. And as president of the R A A, I must also work to protect members from time to time from bullying and bad behaviors by adults, especially administrators. Yes, some progress has been made, but we cannot stop and or slow down our progress. We are in need of training in civility. In fact, I am even more concerned now because of the pressures that we are feeling from everyone to do more, do better, use this new thing, use that new system, and the list goes on and on. In the midst of us trying to improve student achievement, we cannot forget that we are all human. Change does not come easily to all. There are only so many hours in a day and our children deserve the best at all times. We must begin to do better as we require more and better. We must adequately train and prepare everyone for the work to be done. Figure out how to work smarter and achieve success. Understand that if I spend all of my time doing the paperwork, that I am too tired to do the actual lesson, meaning that my students will not get my best lesson. So in the midst of what we must do, let's do it with the knowledge that we are all human and we can only accomplish so much in a day. We must work a little at a time. A rehash of the same old things is not going to get us where we need to go. Our profession is education. In order for us to be successful, we must be good stewards of all of our resources. Our greatest resource is people. Effective school leaders establish a collaborative approach to leadership and model professionalism and civility. So what can you do for safer schools? Thank you.
In view of the hour and the interests of the audience, I would like to defer to anyone in line to speak about Mr. Darby.
Hello. My name is Mrs. Juanita Corbett Mizelli. And I'm here to support Mr. Darby. I've emailed, I've contacted the press, I've spoken with city council. And I thank you, Ms. T. Chiepinkney Epps, the honorable Ms. Epps, for supporting us. For our lives depend on this earth, on our short time, and what we leave behind. And what we leave behind are our children and the pride of their voice when they speak our names after we are long gone. I'd like to introduce you to G H Reed's honor roll, scholar roll, passing the SOLs, as we want all of our children to do, Antonio Mizelli.
Hello. My name is Antonio Mizelli. I speak for the students at G H Reed. I am in the fourth grade. Mr. Darby is a great principal. He is kind to all of the students at Reed. I know we didn't, did not do so well on our SOL test. But if you guys keep Mr. Darby, I know we will do better. So please keep Mr. Darby. He deserves a chance. Thank you.
And we pray that two years is not enough.
Hello, I'm here to talk about Mr. Darby too. That was my son. He's done something that I did that could add an emotional Virginia.
So?
Of originally. Excuse me.
Please state your name.
Antonio, at the regard of the last Mizelli. I am Hispanic descent, I am Puerto Rican of Mexicans. And when I moved here from Spanish Harlem, New York, I had the displeasure of going to our local county public schools. Though I did well academically, I was left out of the loop. I was the Latino community back in nineteen eighty-three. And this man, as you can see, has reached out to my people, to all the people. My son is a Brooklyn student. He passed all his tests. He doesn't make a baby. He, it's partially because of this man that my son is successful. We need parents. As minorities, as a people of color, we need to be better parents. We cannot put the raising of our children on our principles or as teachers or as school board. It is not the responsibility. Our responsibility as parents is to raise our children and to teach them. And to send them to school to do their work correctly and to work hard and not hold up at teachers for doing what they must. This man has touched my community, something that no other school has done that I have seen. My son, and this is his third Richmond Public School that he has attended. And I haven't seen another man even attempt to include my people. We stand out on the outskirts like we're not really wanted for the most part, if you wanna know the truth about it. And though I did, I was successful and I made it to B C U, I was very disenchanted with the whole Virginia school system as a whole. But this man, I have watched him. He doesn't see color, he doesn't see culture. He sees children, he sees parents. And if you take him And if you take him away, the culture of that school is going to change. And it will not be for the better. And that's not a threat. It's just the nature of circumstances. It is an inner-city school. It is rough. It has kids that he is their second father and to some of them, he is their only father figure. And you are taking that away if you take away Mr. Darby. We will improve and we will be successful. But if you take away our leader, we will not, because you got to start over from scratch. It's just like a football team, a baseball team, or a basketball team. If you take away after two years, a person before he can implement his direction, you go back to scratch. And that's what we're getting ready, prepared to do, is go back to scratch. So I plead with you to please give him another year, number two years. He is the man for the job. We just need to help him better. Thank you. Vive la razón.
Hello, my name is Ralph Reynolds. I work for Reynolds Development and specifically work for the Susan and Randolph Reynolds Foundation. I'd like to thank the Board very much for this opportunity to speak tonight. I believe it would be a mistake to replace Principal Darby as Principal of G. H. Reed Elementary at this time for several reasons. Number one, the children. This year Reed has been given over $300,000 as support by local businesses because of him. This is the first year they have become a leader in me school and the only one in the city of Richmond. With partnerships, with partnerships with other leader of me schools in Arico County where they have seen a drop in discipline at Holiday Elementary of seventy percent after only one year of implementation. Can you imagine if that goal is allowed to be achieved? And that doesn't specifically reflect in the SOL scores, but it would be awesome. We plan to bring a bilingual team in that he's never had access to before. And that is very important in a school that is diverse as his. We currently are bringing in partnerships with the Richmond Raiders, Virginia University, my family's foundation, and others. Principal Darby is your turnaround principal. I've seen the progress in the kids myself. Let my family and I continue to support Principal Darby, his team, and his team for the children. Thank you very much.
I'll send my comments in by email.
Good evening Chairman Coleman, I have a bad school words. My name is Ryder Billard. I was going to speak on something else, but someone stopped me at the Two Street Festival and I kind of was astounded to what was going on about Mr. Darby. And I got a lot of phone calls from my fellow Spartans, which had an opportunity, North State Alumni Chapter from Portsmouth to Hampton. They talked to me about Mr. Darby and gave me the rundown on him. And I already had did my homework. And I talked to people, people in the community, students, parents. And it came to me that appeared that this is a great guy. And I don't support too many principals because I think a lot of principals need to be removed. But not at this rate and less than a month. But ultimately, we have, when you had support of a principal that was, had, in one school at Armstrong, was lacking also test scores. And, but we are in the newspaper with them having a question to answer, but Mr. Darby has no chance, no shot, and he's out the door. Ultimately, I think that if all principals are not reading the grade, why they not, why they haven't not been removed? That's my frustration with this whole entire process. I mean, the public needs to know. And ultimately, when I talked to teachers, they said that, you know, that the way the meeting went down, that they were cut off and they were being rude to. I mean, that's not how you operate as you a leader. You don't go to these people that are working hard for you, putting their land on their life for you, and then you be rude to them. And they came up with a bad taste of that. And I mean, it's just not me, and it's a lot of other people in the community. But I think that we need to come to the table, which is stakeholders, and the teachers, and especially Mr. Darby. And I think he don't need to be removed if the other principal is not removed, because it's the bigger picture. There's a lot of schools that are not being degraded. It's just not greed. It's not just Armstrong, George Will, Hugh Nutt. It's a long, I can run a gambling on schools that have problems with our test scores. So ultimately, you're just going to take one principal in a mainstream with at the beginning of the month, and you only had one month that he's been on the job. You could have removed him last year if that was the case. So why even wait till one month and then have unstable and no stability in the schools and then you get an intern in here and then the students, they don't know what to do. These children love him, the teachers love him, and the community love him. And if my Spartans support him, I love him. So the whole degree ago, and I just want to let you know that everybody enough to stay behind you, Mr. Darby. Thank you.
One of the definitely things the public are coming out tonight and speaking, and for.
The next item on the agenda is item three, informational reports and items for action. First item is 3.01 is to approve the minutes that are listed there on your agenda. Those minutes have been posted on the web before your review. They were also sent to you. And I just ask that you approve them this time. All in favor? Any extensions? Any opposing?
I abstain.
Thank you. Motion passes eight with one exception. Minutes have been approved. The next item is 3.02 to receive and approve submission of the fiscal 2015 Public Chartered Schools.
Okay, we're sorry. So come on forward, please. We have some more public information. Now, here's our question. Is it one person speaking for the group?
Uh, there is one. I'm here to make.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, good evening. My name is from San Antonio, New York. And I'm going to be the chairman of the community, Spanish community.
You can speak into the mic, okay? Just pull it close to you.
Good evening. We are here in the association of the Spanish community.
And families of the G. H. Reed School, we are feeling very sad about the decision that was taken to replace Mr. Davis as the principal of our school. We want to express our feelings. We want to say that Mr. Davis has been giving us confidence and trust in the progress of learning and... In the process that our children have been showing in the, in the learning, learning progress of the education of our children. We are thinking that the solution is not to replace Mr. Darby, but to support his school with the necessary resources to make a progress. If it is needed, the Spanish community is able to support his school. In sole recourse, sorry. We want to keep Mr. Darby as the principal of our school. We have to remember that his school is the second home for our children. The school is our children's support. It's our sign repeating that Mr. Darby give us the maximum support and confidence for our children to be in this school. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Vice Chair, School Board Members, Superintendent Bedden. We are coming, Dr. Leonard and I, on behalf of Patrick Henry and Dr. Assafin, the CFP, to come forward, as well as the Richmond Career Education and Employment Academy. Mr. Burton, would you come forward at this time? Both schools have submitted a charter, supplemental charter application grant as public charter schools for your review, and you should have that in your packet. And both principals are here to field and address any questions that you may have at this time.
Questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, you need a motion to approve that?
Hold on, one second. Okay, here we go.
The movement, Mrs. Larson, is seconded by Mr. Stern. Ms. Gray, Mr. Bull, Mrs. Taylor, Mrs. Harris Mohammed, Dr. Jones, Mrs. Pinkney, Mrs. Larson, Mr. Coleman.
Yes.
Motion passes nine zero. The next item on the agenda is 3.02, receiving, I'm sorry, 3.03, receive and approve the proclamation recognizing School Lunch Week. That proclamation was posted for you. It was motioned by Mr. Stern. Is there a second? And seconded by Ms. Harris Mohammed, Mr. Stern. Ms. Gray, Mr. Bull, Mrs. Taylor, Mrs. Harris Mohammed, Dr. Jones, Mrs. Pinkney, Mrs. Larson, Mr. Coleman.
Yes.
Motion passes nine zero. The next item is 3.04, receive and approve a proclamation recognizing Safe Schools Month. That proclamation was also posted for your review along with the calendar of events for the month. The motion was made by Dr. Jones. It was seconded and posted. Mr. Stern, Ms. Gray, Mr. Bull, Mrs. Taylor, Mrs. Harris Mohammed. Safe Schools Month. Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Pinkney?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson? Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Motion passes nine zero. The next item is 3.05, receive and approve school improvement plans.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chair, and members of the school board meeting. Pursuant to the Virginia Code on VAC 20131310, a school improvement plan must be developed and implemented based on the results of an academic review, which occurred last year, 2013-14. The results were provided in May of 2014 for all schools accredited with warning or those provisionally accredited graduation rate. Upon receipt of this notification of the award and the receipt of the essential actions from the academic review, the school must develop a plan that has to be approved by the Division Superintendent, as well as the local school board. And for consistency in reporting out the Office of School Improvement and Innovation, decided to have those essential actions documented, as well as the other tasks to become fully accredited in a PowerPoint template for your review. And you have received them in a Friday package and you also received them as part of the board packet tonight. We would like to acknowledge the attendance of the principals that developed these plans. They are in the audience tonight, and I thank them for their attendance. And also the Office of School Improvement and Innovations School Program Managers are also in attendance that supported this effort. They are, the principals are here to provide clarification on any of the details in their plans that you have any questions about. And you are welcome to follow up with them as individuals as well, but we do need the board to approve, and the superintendent approve those essential, addressing those essential actions.
Next question?
Yes, thank you so much for providing that information. I am concerned that this is a lot of information for us to go over. I can't speak for any other board member, nor will I try. But this was too much for me to digest over the weekend. And I did not receive this information until late Friday evening. So, Mr. Chairman, I just think that, I professionally think that we do not approve this tonight because it is, it is one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen.
Forty-four.
You want us to review forty-four school improvement plans over the, you wanted us to approve, to review forty-four school improvement plans over the weekend and be prepared to vote on them tonight. I just think that is too much for this board to digest professionally. And I don't want to spend four hours in questioning and answering. I don't think it's fair to the principals. I don't think it's fair to their leadership team who developed these plans for us to sit here and approve something that I know I have not had the ability to read. And I would like to go through each one. And I think every board member should go through each one. And I also think, I just want to take this opportunity to say, because it was just planted in my spirit, we have a habit of making decisions on a rush presence or making rushed decisions because it has been stated we need to make the decision. We have the opportunity to do something right tonight. And we need to take a minute and review these plans. Now, that's my professional opinion. I'm only one of nine. But I think if we sit here, now, eight other members might have read through them. I don't know. But I know I did, and I'm an educator. And I understand this stuff. But that's too much to go over in two days and be prepared to vote on all of these plans tonight. So I think it would be conducive of us not to vote on this tonight. To give us, until the next meeting, if we have any questions, we go through you with our questions, and you submit them to the superintendent and his team and go from there. But it's too much information to digest.
Mr. Chairman, I have to respond because there is a time requirement to this.
Okay.
And to be clear, what we sent this weekend was another copy that was sent at least a week ago. So we actually sent these as part of the Friday report at least a week ago. So I just want the record to be clear on it. So we didn't just send this this week, because, and that is a streamlined version, because the packets themselves that you have to do are enormous. So this was actually a condensed version to make it simpler for your audience of four items.
Could you restate about this timeline you're saying?
The, we had a waiver because we did not have a board meeting the last of September. So the State Department, Department of Education, allowed us to have it on our agenda for approval for this board meeting, that those plans had been reviewed. A regular school improvement plan can range anywhere. I've seen them up to three hundred pages long for one school. So the effort of my office and my program managers was to compile the essential information regarding the essential actions and those specific tasks that are required to address those in a compact package.
Mr. Bourne?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you guys for your hard work on getting these done. I know there's much more to do. Having seen these a couple times, Mr. Chairman, I would like to approve the school improvement plans and the law to the state.
Second.
To approve the school improvement plans are before.
It was seconded by Ms. Gray. Mr. Stern?
Yes. Hold on, hold on. The motion is seconded, in discussion. Ms. Burden?
Yes, um, I don't know if you noticed, but I had my hand up before Mr. Coleman made this motion. And so I really wanted to speak to the fact that I'm not prepared to approve these plans because as I go through them, I don't, and specifically with regard to these Title I schools, there is not much information in here that speaks to how we're going to engage the parents. And so I'd like to see these plans, you know, let's take them back. I appreciate the effort that the principals put into writing these plans. But because of our historical lack of parental involvement and engagement, I'd like to see these plans get a little bit more meat to how the schools are going to do that.
Any response from administration?
The, um, the essential actions and the tasks that have been developed by the principals and their administrative teams, those will become part of the school improvement plan through the process involving their stakeholders. That is a requirement.
Mrs. Larson?
So they will have input.
Um, I wanted to thank you for giving us the plans in advance. I appreciate that. And I wanted to ask how you are going to, as the leaders of this team of principals, how are you going to check in with them? And how are you going to keep up to date on whether they're executing the plan or not?
We have a timeline, and the principals have notified that we'll be looking to identify those specific actions outlined in those PowerPoints. They actually help us as well, because we can look specifically for tasks in their plans that address each one of those actions. And we notified them that we begin looking at those the first of November. That allows time for stakeholder input and to be involved in the planning process as well.
I just wanted to let the record reflect. I would like to know when these plans were initially sent out. I've heard several times that thank you for in advance, thank you for sending them in advance. I didn't get them. They were not in my inbox until late Friday night. So I, I've never seen these plans until the weekend. So if they were sent to us before, then I need to know when and in what package were they sent, because I did not get them prior to Friday evening.
Okay. Bill?
Um, I would also like to see more consistency across the board, because we have some, the transient movement across the district is so high. That's a report I'm starting to write, by the way, on the transits of our population. But because of the movement, I would like to see more consistency across the board. Us, timelines and directives, that type of specificity. And I didn't see them in the initial reports.
They, they will be in your plans, all of these schools that are, especially these Title I schools, and actually Richmond requires all their schools to use Endastar. And the Endastar School Improvement Web-Based Program requires them, when they enter a task associated with one of these essential actions, to document the timeline, the person responsible, and when the task was actually completed. So I encourage you for your schools, that you all have in your districts, to get the gas flow again, and you can actually look at the school improvement plans as they're developed and see that type of detail.
Dr. Bennet?
Mr. Chairman, the plans were sent September twenty-sixth, Friday report.
Any other discussion? Okay. Um, still?
Does this should not be approved tonight, then what can be approved specifically?
I would have to contact Department of Education to find out what they would apply.
Does your experience when this helped to have a continued operation as to how that would carry out? I mean, is that generally, is that generally granted on such reports?
I've never known it to be requested. So I can't, I don't look at this one.
I will share with the board concern I have with, as we try to get our ship in order with regards to the state requirements. The district has been put on notice that we were the conversation of potentially having a district level review by the state. Which, if you don't know what a district level review is, that is the same thing that preceded what happened in Franklin City. And I think will precede peacefully. So we have to really do a good job of dotting i's and crossing our t's with the state expectations. So we're trying to work through that. It has been put on hold as a conversation piece, to measure the progress that we're making or not making. So it may come back around again.
Okay, Dr. Jones?
Thank you, Jim. Just a question, if we are to approve this and pass this motion tonight, I'm hearing some of the questions that my colleagues have. And I think I'm hearing you say that there's still some more findings that will happen relative to stakeholder input, the ability to add the, uh, make sure that the plans are being implemented. So my question is, this will come, will this come back before us in some way, shape, or form, and when?
Okay, really, you're looking at the intent of the schools to address the findings from the academic review. So, but they also, we asked them to share some other things that they're going to implement to become fully accredited. So those are the last couple pages. The attention is really focused on that they have an indicator in parentheses where we should be able to locate tasks associated with addressing that essential action. So for all intents and purposes, we're really looking at their intent to address those essential actions. The details, like Ms. Taylor alluded to, will come with input from the team. But the point the state, what the state is looking for is that they are going to address the essential actions. It could look very different in each school in the district. The intent is there to address the essential actions. So that's what we're looking at.
All right, I'm sorry.
The motion was made by Mr. Bourne and was seconded by Ms. Gray to approve these school improvement plans as presented. Mr. Stern?
Yes.
Ms. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Bourne? Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Harris Mohammed?
No.
Dr. Jones? Mrs. Pinky Ebs?
No.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Motion passes seven two. The next item is three point zero six, receive an update on newly accredited school's.
Mr. Chairman, you all received previously a copy of priority, yes, the first one. So I'm not going to go over every piece of this information, get the highlights. If there's something someone sees they'd like me to address, I will do so. I think it was September thirtieth that we attended a staff and community meeting. Is that the first page? And what you see there is that, here we go. Process for identifying a school with priority status. Richmond Public Schools currently has twelve priority schools. Recently had two exit, which was Armstrong and Bruchal exit, just to stay clear. Requirement, identification, go back to identification. Is that you become a priority school when you are the lowest performing five percent of Title I schools in the state. Unfortunately, we don't get this information until early in September, generally because the state has to run the numbers and they compare you to the entire state of Title I schools. In this case, there were seven hundred and thirty-two schools in the state. Of that, thirty-six schools end up in the slot for being any priority school status. We had two schools that entered priority school status. One being Woodville, two additional schools, and other being Reed. Woodville notification did not apply, because the principal was already replaced at Woodville, which is why they did not have to go through this process. Additionally, the state shared that they reviewed all of the data, measurable areas. And as we found, when we looked to try to look for reasons to respond to this, thirty-three of the thirty-four measurable areas showed a decline. One area showed a one percentage point gain that improved. Next slide. This has come about because previously the state had been being a little more flexible than they had in the past. The state received a review by the federal government and was told that they must adhere to the departments to the letter of the law, which also includes the hiring of a priority partner in a plan that was submitted by Virginia Department of Education. So you had an original plan that was approved, and then you had a waiting request, which was an update to the plan. It says specifically that you are expected to implement a select intervention strategies in a USDO model over a three-year period of time. So when you are a priority status school, that means that you have three years that you will stay in it at minimum to be in that status. Next slide. The four choices, as someone mentioned earlier, turnaround model, the restart model, the school closure, and the transformation. Obviously, restart and school closure were not options this late in the day. Restart means converting your school to reopening as a charter school, under educational management organization, or a charter management organization. And that still has to also go to VDOE for approval, because they vet who the education management organization is and who the charter management organization is. So it's a lengthy process, is what was made clear. School closure, basically you close the school and send the kids to other schools that have higher performing data. So in essence, we are left with two models, a turnaround and a transformation. Each include, well, all of them really, because you're closing, the rule of the principal has to stay at home, so require replacing the principal. While I don't, and I voice my concern with VDOE, and even Secretary Dunn, that we have challenges with the fact that we focus on one individual, but that's wage written out, and nothing that we can do other than continue to force our concern about the current model. Next slide. Require turnaround principal, as you see, was earlier required by strong leadership, are reviewing the performance of the current principal, either replacing the principal and/or submitting a request that demonstrates to the state education agency, which means they still have to approve the request, that the current principal has a track record in improvement achievement. So if we did that, would they inform us that your school year this year would be a whole year, you would still be labeled as priority status, then you move to a minimum of four years where you're priority status. And again, it is a request that you submit to the state. So it's not guaranteed that it'll be approved. Next slide. Federal guidance document had this statement, does question does flexibility for section one BDA point one of final requirements that had LEA to retain any principal in a tier one and tier two school within the last two years. There are only tier one and tier two schools. Virginia Law has tier three schools, it doesn't exist. The answer was no, and effectively saying that it is not our choice. We have to submit the request and ask someone else for permission to do that. Next slide. Then you have the additional required turnaround principals to be inactive, and I won't read all those, but it includes ensuring that teachers are effective and able to improve instruction. And it talks about renewing the quality of the staff, not transferring in anybody who is not rated effective, and so on, and so on. The other one is redesigning the school day, week, and year, which we in the process of developing a plan to do that with all of our priority schools to make sure we have compliance with the guidance. Next slide. Part of the review for teacher performance will obviously is tied to the teaching performance based system that was adopted by Virginia that was submitted with the plan, just like we have the same principles for, same performance based type of plan for principals. And of course, you can see that two, three of the heavy ones have to do an instructional planning assessment of for student learning, for student active progress. Next slide. And then you have to strengthen the school's instructional program, which we're working on as a system, using data to inform. That's happening system wide, we're purchasing the longitudinal data system to support that work for all of our schools. Establishing school environment, improve school safety and discipline. They provide ongoing mechanism for family and community engagement. Next slide. Impact of choice, we asked for clarification, again, from VDOE. They got another clarification from USDOE on September nineteenth, I guess, when you called back again. And they talked about the replacement of the school to begin the three-year intervention model requires you replace another principal. Ms. Garland checked again this past week about if we wait. You still have to, if you wait, submit the request to VDOE to retain the principal. What they also made her aware of is that you now then push out probably eighteen months before you receive any support from the state. Because you have this academic year, and then by the time you start doing this process, you may not see the money until January of twenty sixteen. And/or the training and resources. They made it clear to us that it is not just the money. It is the whole process of school improvement that you put the school through, which includes professional development, which includes the support of the lead turnaround partner and the things that they provide for you. Next slide. When you see, talk about how we got to this point, the thirty-three of the thirty-four measures for some of the data they looked at, and we went back and checked ourselves about federal AMOs. Typically, the school that's based, the priority status is based on your all student performance in English and Math. In effort to try to find something to address the situation, the data was pulled. And that's how we found that thirty-three of thirty-four areas had declined. Twenty eleven, twenty twelve was the last year of old assessment, where schools were performing in the eighties, nineties, roughly. Twenty twelve, twenty thirteen was the first year. Twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen was the second year. So thus, we end up in a language that says, principal being this principal of the school two years prior to being determined to be priority. So thus, we end up in a language that says, principal being this principal of the school two years prior to being determined to be priority status. Had this still been the performance, but had not been a Title I priority school, the other stuff would not have triggered. It was the being in the bottom five percent that triggered the federal guidelines based on a plan that VDOE submitted to the feds for their waiver for updating approval on their plan, approval. Next slide. And it just goes English, next one, mathematics, next, history. The other highlight that was pointed out, when we did address with the state, the influx of our English language learners. They notice what we notice. Many of our English language learners are outperforming our African-American students. So their point was, how is that an argument? Or defense? Next slide. So that's just an overview. The board obviously has the ability, because we cannot submit a request without the board's permission. We can't submit a request to VDOE without the board's support or your consent. So that is the option of the board, if they want to pursue that option. Our recommendation is that we enter priority status to give as much support to the school as soon as possible.
Questions? Okay, Mr. Chairman?
I would like to put a motion on table to reject the recommendation of the superintendent's term, vote to retain Mr. Darby in his position as principal for the state of the city. Second.
Screen.
It's my understanding from the presentation that we don't have the authority to do that. We have the authority to request from the state the ability to retain the principal there, but we don't have the authority. We're taking state and federal dollars to say that we're going to do that, so.
That is our understanding. In truth, if you look at state code and your own policy, the reassignment of any principal does not require approval.
Right.
As long as their salary is not empty. What you would have to act upon is if you want to, and we're following the guidelines as presented, that we believe in the best interest of the entire school. No disrespect, Mr. Darby is a good person, he really is. But you could, he would say, put if you're going to submit the request pending their decision, that would be what you would be doing.
And just a quick follow-up to that. Not, not that we discussed salaries in the open, but it was in the newspaper, so salary would be held harmless in this situation?
Yes.
Okay.
This is, have any comments? The, the, the.
The motion was made by Mrs. Taylor, seconded by Ms. Peyton Habs, to reject the recommendation of the superintendent and retain Mr. Darby as principal of Reed.
Okay, Mrs. Mohammed?
I appreciate the transparency and the candidates behind the presentation. I have a couple of questions I would like to ask them all at once and allow the superintendent to address each one, and I don't mind repeating them if need be. What I would like to know, and I know this is a very difficult decision, did, and I know you were not here, your team was not here, but what we, what I would like for us to look at is, did Mr. Darby have any?
Um, I'm sorry, this. We would give you that opportunity, but your, the motion was made and seconded, so. Go ahead, this. Is it, is it part of discussion? Okay, thank you. Discussion, okay.
I understand that you and part of your leadership team was not here last year. But what I am very concerned about through this process is if Mr. Darby, or any other principal, it just so happens to be Mr. Darby in this situation. Did he have any coaching that's documented over the past two years? And the reason I'm asking that is because the scores did not meet state accreditation last year, from my understanding, the year before. So the district knew that.
I think if we're having specific personnel stuff, we do need to go ahead and close.
I would love to join you as well.
Excuse me, excuse me. The issue with regarding Mr. Darby's specific performance needs to be addressed and closed? If this is, if it's questions regarding the general, um, no, it's a turnaround, but, I mean, right, but in a turnaround side, does he really have specific performance?
Okay, so I'll go to the next question. Talk to me about the curriculum, or speak to us about how the curriculum changed on the K through five grade level over the past three years? And did it just impact from what you have reviewed in terms of the data? Did it impact just Reed Elementary School in terms of the newly revised state assessments? And if so, if that did impact, if it had some factor in how the scores went up or down? How are we addressing the other concerns that we have in our schools that have not met the accreditation status? So I, because we've been trying to go back and forth and make sure that I am within protocol, I'll let you, let's discuss that, and then if I may, Mr. Coleman, go back and have, I have another question.
I want to try to answer this based on the framework that I'm familiar with, and go back three years as we speculate. What I do know is that the change from the first year you saw to the second year had a large drop across the state. It was highlighted that Richmond had one of the biggest drops, which when the state came in and did some academic reviews, it was determined that we had, this past year, the year before that, some significant alignment issues with our curriculum. The work was done, the team, by the time I arrived, that they were working to address that, and would continue to work. But they worked very hard to start addressing and responding to those academic reviews conducted by the state. What you will find, and again, another point of conversation, is the conversation is always about growth. The schools that we went and appealed their loss, potential loss of accreditation was because they had growth. The one school we did not appeal did not have any growth. You will see later, the plans, we'll get the next thing, item, talks about academic improvement plan that we're working on for our entire system. And it also shows the data that was requested to be presented to this board from last year to this current past year. And you will see a large increase in the number of schools with large growth. So I would say the work that had started with the previous team actually started to show dividends. One of the conversations, again, with the state has been around, but you had other schools that had similar challenges and showed significant gains. So how do you explain that?
Reason.
When you say.
Reason.
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 You have.
Excuse me, excuse me.
So those were the questions that were put to us, and again, several of them had the same similar situations that existed. Change in demographics, change in which students are going to the schools. And the key is the five percent, being in the bottom five percent. Had those scores showed like they did, but did not fall into five percent, we wouldn't be having this conversation, other than it would be another school in the mix that we're working to improve. And being another year of accreditation with warning in certain areas. First year before last, it was accreditation with warning and just math. This past year was accreditation with warning and three content areas. So everything in their mind is going the opposite.
Follow-up, Mr. Chairman? I appreciate that, Dr. Bettin. So I heard our, I want to say turnaround partner, but I know that's not your title. Know you work with the State Department. You mentioned that the academic review for the two thousand and thirteen, fourteen school year was presented in May, or the results. The results were presented in May of two thousand and fourteen. In that review, did it specify clearly the concern of our priority schools? Did it outline the challenges? Talk to us about the review. What was in, what needs to point out to us that was in that review?
The academic review conducted by VDOE last year had a focus. And it was real, the focus was on the alignment of the written, taught, and assessed curriculum. So when they came in and did the review of documents in Richmond Public Schools last year, their entire focus was on curriculum alignment, and as it was across the entire state. So that was the focus. So when you look at those PowerPoints, all of the central actions focus around that, with the exception of the high schools who are provisionally accredited graduation rate. And then they are, they had a little different central action associated with monitoring that.
Okay, so. Was the board presenting that document, were we handed that documentation? Or was it just told to us?
I can't speak to that because I was not here.
Okay. I kind of knew the answer to.
Presentation done to the board by Mrs. Cole, from the call.
Okay, last follow-up, Mr. Chairman, and I appreciate the time for my question. It's not really, excuse me, it's not really the question, it's more so of a concern that, and I really do appreciate the information that you all have provided for us in terms of the seriousness of this, and being in the status that we are in, having the schools that we have, that are holding some challenges in their instructional practices. I'm about the business of making best decisions for children. And I assume that you receive applause, and applause. But I am in the business of about making the best decisions for children. Now, in the report that we received, I counted twenty, Dr. Bettin, I was trying to count the number of schools that had a PowerPoint, it's twenty-nine. Twenty-nine schools have a school improvement plan. We should be replacing twenty-nine persons. Not one. And I know it's not personal, and I applaud Dr. Bettin's efforts. We, some members of this board asked him to make a change. I guess he's trying to implement that, I, you know. However, we have twenty-nine schools that are struggling in some area. I just, I stand for every principal and assistant principal in this district. I support them, they may not believe that, it's not about life, it's about support. It's about what's in the best interest of children. And I just wish we had, and I know you were not here. But we needed to have this conversation with folk in May, not October. We saw what happened to the data of one school when we made a decision to close the school. So here we go again, rushing into another decision. And I just don't believe, I, I, this is what I believe. I believe if we have everything on the table, and it might match up to what the superintendent said, I have no doubt. But if we don't have it, and I asked in an email, can we have someone from the State Department just to tell us that? I don't see anyone here. Because sometimes people need to see and hear other information from another person. So I said, all that to say, I am just very, I'm very disappointed in the way that we're going about business again in Richmond City Public Schools. And I know this board has already made up their mind. But at the end of the day, it impacts children. And that's what I'm about, supporting children. Not somebody's personal feeling that's about, well, the data says this children are more than a four-hundred school. They have feelings, it's upsetting them right now. And I, I just, you know, and I'm not going to beat the horse to death, but I'm just. We have twenty-nine schools with a school improvement plan, we need to replace twenty-nine ones.
Mr. Chairman? Dr. Bettin? The reason that those twenty-nine schools are not getting principal is because as someone said, I think a teacher said, internally, under local controls, any principal who was in a challenged status, that we went over the board, the process we were going through with all principals this year, the new leadership. And accountability piece and expectations for improvement. The thing that changed, and this was over the summer and beginning of the school year, individual meetings with every principal had an hour-long meeting with their executive director, my direction. We sent the board, the focus of the conversations having to do with instructional leadership, school climate, human resource management, organizational management, communication, community relations, professionalism, and student academic progress. So we were affording all principals an opportunity with a new leadership team here to have a chance to improve. And putting some structures in place and support. The thing that changed between now and then was getting notified in September. And that's why we're here, and we have voiced those same concerns with the timing. They hear us, the challenge is when the test scores come back and when they calculate it. But we absolutely agree, the timing is wrong. And we've had that, I've had one-on-one, and also the four districts that are, three, excuse me, that are most challenging in the state. Myself, Norfolk, and Petersburg, had a group meeting with the state superintendent. He acknowledged that, he said, we have the toughest job more than the governor or him, or himself, the superintendents of these three districts. And that conversation was about what are the things that you're experiencing, your challenges, as they continue to work on. But until that system changes, this is when we find out the information. But we will operate with individual conferences, improvement conversations, here's what will happen if this doesn't happen at the end of this school year. Okay, Mrs. Taylor, and just to remind everyone, could I say something first, Mrs. Taylor? Up until this point, what I've tried to do is let everybody say their piece. We talked about no applause. People keep applauding, people keep cheering. This is a hard situation, I get it. But I also want to make this statement, because I heard my colleague make it. I believe that this entire board is about the children. Now, can I get a clap? And so this, this is, this is a challenge for us. This is, this is hard, this is a challenge. And I'm hoping I've allowed us to talk so we can hear each other. But I do think we do need to respect one another. And I've tried my best to understand a lot of emotions are here. But we're at a point now where we're going to have to move forward. So I'm also asking my colleagues, you know, let's make our comments and try to move forward, okay? Thank you, Mrs. Taylor.
I just wanted to take the time to clear the record. My colleague, Ms. Grace, spoke to you earlier, that is not a decision that we. that it's not a decision that we as a school board can make. And I just wanted to correct you that it is a decision that we can make. When it comes to the placement of our employees, Dr. Benton is our employee. And any recommendation that he makes regarding the staff of RPS, the school board has the right to decide to shoot it up or shoot it down. So that, that to say that first. I was also one of two school board members who attended the community meeting in Reed Elementary School. I heard the outcry from that community, community. And my understanding is, what Dr. Benton first admitted during that time, that it was up to the boards to decide how this would end. But my understanding is that if Mr. Darby stays in that role, then there will be a financial loss as far as additional funding for turnaround to this district. And it is my opinion that when you choose money over children's welfare, we have money, we have millions and millions of dollars circulating, over $300 million circulating. And we still have 33 schools in the state that they're in. So it is my opinion that money isn't the solution. We make the point about how Hispanic students are outperforming English-speaking African-American students. To me, that doesn't speak to, we need more money. When you have a principal who cares not only about the children like they were his own, but he cares about their family, that to me speaks over additional funds that apparently aren't doing what they need to do in the first place. So for me, I think it's more important to keep a leader who's already going down the trail, he's already establishing relationships with the community, to keep him in that position so that he can move our students far along more so than money ever could. So I support my motion.
Ms. Taylor?
Now I'll be brief. I just want to read some comments from the, and this individual may no longer be the Office of Elementary and Secondary Education Executive Director. But they spoke to this process, this individual spoke to a process of schools going into an improvement and the decision to remove the principal. And basically, what they said is that's a knee-jerk reaction to move the principal out of that school. I think that the fact that as a board member, this particular school being in the district that I serve, not being able to have received any clarity from you, Dr. Benton, or your administration on this matter is not setting right with my soul. I'm not trying to, I don't want to make a decision based on my emotions. I really would like to be able to make this decision based on facts. The fact of the matter is there are four options. This discussion about, well, you know, this is a new change and, you know, this is his second year. And I don't mean to beat up on any principal that is currently in a situation where they are leading a school that has not failed to progress as quickly as other schools. I think this is about the fact that we have resources where they need to be. We've asked principals to rise to a challenge without the necessary tools. I think we set a precedent in this district if we say to Mr. Darby and all of our other principals, you stay in place, we will empower you to move your schools forward because that is what's in the best interest of these children. Again, I didn't even get to the part about what this individual said, but there's information out there that criticizes the fact that we would clearly follow a mandate by the United States Department of Education when they aren't the ones that are in front of these children. They aren't the ones doing the work. So I appreciate the dilemma that we face right now. But for us to be, as a board, to have to make this decision on very limited and biased information is unfair to these children.
I have a question for the administration. Could you give me some clarity on how much money would come in total and per year? An estimate, when would it come? And give some examples of what it could do?
You cannot receive the money until you follow the USDA guidelines in regards of. If you replace the principal, the process would begin this month in regards to training for the principal. And the grant would be submitted in December of this year. The funding would be available in January. If the principal is not replaced and we wait to write a letter the following year, in the fall, the principal would go to the training, the fall training, and the money would be received in January of 2016. The money brings, the bulk of the money is used for the lead turnaround partner, who brings in leadership coaching, instructional coaches. They help develop PLCs in the building, collaborative work effort, extend learning time. They also bring in materials to support the initiatives based on the needs assessment that will be conducted. There will be stipends for the teachers to stay after school and participate in professional development. Some, lots of summer professional development based on the needs assessment and evaluation of the scores. And all of that would be supported by the lead turnaround partner. The stipends, of course, would be paid through the grant funds through the division. We'd also have a state contractor that would also serve as a semi-leadership coach and would attend all the transformational meetings in the school and support the development of agendas and development of actionable deliverables from those meetings. They would also have one of my staff, myself, Dr. Williams, or Dr. Scott, attend their transformational meetings. So they'd also have onsite division-level support that is required by the grant.
I appreciate that information. And I appreciate all the folks that came out tonight. I have been to Reed several times. I've toured and met the principals. And I, I think the culture and the climate of the school is very positive. I, as a board member, have a hard time supporting something that would deny all of these resources just listed for the students at that school. And I understand that's not a popular idea, but I don't believe that SOLs are everything. I have children who take SOLs and I struggle with it. But our back is kind of up against the wall with this situation. And if we need to bring resources in to make sure that the teachers are properly trained and the students are getting everything that they possibly can, then I feel like this is the best direction for the school.
Just a question for Dr. Benton. We've had some discussion here about, you know, best interest of children. And I guess it would, you know, be helpful just to kind of hear you, you know, just briefly state. With obviously the popularity that Mr. Darby has in this school community and is, one cannot think because of the outperformance you brought in tonight. Talk to me about how in your estimation, and we've heard about, naturally about the funds that have come into the district, things of that nature, but talk to me about how you see this being in the best interest of children. Because I, I don't believe that you would bring this recommendation to the board if, you know, you did not think it was ultimately in the best interest long-term, maybe not popular, but best interest of children. So talk to me about how you see this, not being that popular, but still somehow in your mind, in your experience, being the best interest of our community.
Dr. Jones, this has not been his decision. As you shared earlier, that collectively we sat as a leadership team and discussed the situation, the same conversation we had with the board, which was a difficult one prior to this. As I shared, apparently, everything that I have to do is about making sure a child is to graduation. And when I see a large drops, not small, large. I mean, we're talking about 40-point swings. So not the first year, like 20 and 20, multiple years back-to-back. And then I see the challenges we're having with children who are going to the middle school, where our middle school is having large challenges with failures. And I share with the board that that didn't start just with the middle school. It's a number of children that were also sent from elementary school to middle school who are behind. And then that snowbells into another problem in the high school. And then you look at the number of kids who are not graduating, they're dropping out because they haven't progressed. At the end of the day, I like Mr. Darby. But at the end of the day, I also see, it's like if I put 10 children in front of me and we got 70% graduation rate, which three am I going to decide? To say, you're not going to, you're not going to, you're not going to, for a variety of reasons. We are a pre-K through 12 system. We have to hit the mark all the way through. We approached this initially when it was just our choice and everything was equal with regards to, everybody's got the same situation. Started with the same plan of action for Reed and all other priority schools. But then when I also, and the teachers, I heard them, but a recurring theme that I thought was interesting is they kept saying, more resources, we need more resources, or we didn't get resources. And I don't doubt that's true. I don't doubt that that's not true. But so now I have the ability to give you more, to help you to help more children? How could I not do that? How could I actually not give you more resources? And I think one of the parents, who I sat talking with afterwards, lovely lady but passionate about Mr. Darby, she asked the question of, how do you know the next person's going to be better? The flip side is, I don't know. But I got to try to find that person who is both going to be instructive, strong, and also just as nurturing. I can't assume anyone exists. Not to mention that the process we have in place is because the school community is to play a part in the selection process of the principal. So they actually haven't said so, and it also. So we won't be doing it to them, we'll be doing it with them. And that's where the comment ends up for it. You know, it's, it's, it's not easy. But I got to roll with doing everything I can for the children, the teachers that are teaching the children. And I think one teacher said it best, I appreciate her saying it, we own those too. We own, and I was glad she said that. And then I said also, I appreciate you, we as a district own it also.
Thank you.
Now, Ms. Taylor, have you spoken twice on this issue?
I probably have.
You want to ask?
I appreciate that. I just want to start off by saying, Joe Clark, he's out of high. The most valuable resource that we can offer to a student are adults that care, that show they care. I don't have a lot of money in my household, and my children adore me. You can take my children, or would you take my children out of my home to give them to someone who can offer them more financials? A bigger home, more luxurious cars? Or are they better off in the household with their mom and dad that love them and that they are willing to do whatever they have to to not only make things better for themselves, but to please myself and my husband? These children need someone that can care. Like you said, do you know that this new individual would do better? But you don't know. You don't know. And you also don't know what Mr. Darby can do in another year. And to not give him that opportunity, someone who has proven by the people who have come out to support him that he is that individual, that we know for sure that he is that individual who cares about students, who cares about their families, who cares about their community. So why not, why not do that bold thing that we always speak about? And give our staff a chance to prove that they can do what we have put them in a position to do?
Okay, is the motion adjourned?
The motion on the floor was made by Ms. Taylor and seconded by Ms. Pinkney-Apps. And it is to reject the recommendation of the superintendent to retain Mr. Darby as principal of Reed. Mr. Sterling? Ms. Gray? Mr. Bourne? Mrs. Taylor? Mrs. Harris-Mohammed? Dr. Jones? Mrs. Pinkney-Apps? Mrs. Larson? Mr. Coleman? Motion fails, six to eight.
We'll take your comments, Ms. Taylor. Ms. Taylor's motion is to reject the superintendent for the recommendation.
Ali, take your seat. Thank you very much.
The next item is 3007. To receive approval in the resources actions.
School Board Chairman, Mr. Coleman, Vice Chairman, Ms. Larson, Dr. Benton, School Board Members, good evening. I present to you this evening the school board agenda. HR actions for approval include the termination of one employee, the nomination of 40 employees, the change of contract of 27 employees, and the transfer of eight employees. In addition, HR actions for information include the resignation of nine employees, the retirement of seven employees, the furlough of six employees, the returning from leave of seven employees, the rescission of employment of three employees, and the change of name of six employees. In addition, you also have included in your package some items that are on the addendum, which include an additional resignation, an additional change of contract, several change of contracts, couple of recertifications, and a couple of additional nominations.
Hey, colleagues, anything here? We're going to have some discussion closed.
I'd like to have, I'd like for us to have a discussion closed, please.
All right, thank you. All right, Dr. Bourne?
Yes, and just in addition to the HR report that Mr. Phillips just shared with you, just want to provide the board with an update that we have completed our leveling, looking at the data for special education teachers. And we will have to move approximately 24 elementary special education teachers at the secondary level, both middle and high school, to meet the caseload requirements. We will be working in conjunction with Human Resource to notify those persons appropriately to give them their HR process, and also working with the principals to get that process underway such that the master schedules can be implemented. We will be working in conjunction with Human Resource to notify those persons appropriately, to give them their HR process, and also working with the principals to get that process underway such that the master schedules can be implemented accordingly at the secondary level. We just wanted to notify you in advance so that you would have that information.
Dr. Bedden?
Just to add another note to that, there will be a number of people who probably are not happy about receiving the change. If you did not love it, you'd have to hire twenty-something teachers to tune them by one point six million dollars. Some people will probably not be happy about the level process. And in addition, some may have to teach a level, you know, certified K through twelve at a level that they have not taught before. But we would then have to hire twenty-something teachers to tune about one point six million dollars jobs we don't have. So just preparing you, probably get phone calls from people, and we got to move the teachers where the kids enrollment numbers are. We have a number on one school that is in need of nine.
Exactly.
Teachers, because enrollment has increased with needs for special needs. It's not just a number thing, it's also the type of services that have to be aligned also, that play a factor.
That is correct. I would just hope in the future, before you move my six-year-old, you give me a heads up. When I picked him up, he was, no, he wasn't really that mad about it, but he gave me the notice before anybody else. I'm just trying to give you a hard time. Yeah, I think a letter was going home in his backpack, but he told me before I got it.
And also just to add to that, and then I'll move on because I know we have an agenda. We will be providing some additional professional development. We realize that going from elementary to working with high school students can be a periodic shift, and so we will provide some additional technical assistance for those teachers to make sure they are equipped to deliver instruction at that level as well.
Thank you.
Question?
Oh, question.
I'm sorry. Follow-up call with Dr. Boyd just said. How many hours, Professor Goldman, are you going to give?
We'll be looking at that and looking at what the needs are. Some teachers may need assistance with classroom management, is working with older students, it's different than younger students. Some may need both classroom management and content pieces to make sure that they're equipped at that level. And so once we identify what capacity those teachers will be working at and working in conjunction with the principals, we'll make sure that those needs are identified accordingly. So, so in short, we don't want it to make it just a blanket statement, teacher X may need more than teacher Y, and so we want to make sure it'll be individualized, those supports is appropriate.
And so would that be likened to like on-the-job training?
Could be professional development during planning periods, it could be side-by-side coaching, the I-do, we-do, you-do type of model, or is it gradual release in addition to the professional development and feedback?
Okay, and you may be best able to answer this, Dr. Boyd. In Sunday's paper, once again, we've announced for school nurses. What's going on there?
Yes, we, Ms. Rogers has been working diligently with HR to try and fill our R and M vacancies. We've made a couple of offers, but the potential candidates are not quite as pleased with the salary schedule, so we are having challenges with that. We have explored looking at contract services similar to what we do for vacancies for speech-language pathologists. However, as you know, when we look at contract services, the hour breakdown is substantially higher. So currently, we do have subs in place, and Ms. Rogers spoke with me recently last week to say that the principals are pleased with the persons who are subbing, but we're still working diligently to get full-time qualified persons. And so we're going to continue that search, but it may be a fiscal impact if we have to move into the direction of contract services, because it's almost twice as much as the hourly rate that we pay someone if they were actually on the RPS payroll.
Okay, and Mr. Phillips, you may be able to best answer this. How much money have we spent on these announcements? And is it coming out of the HR budget?
Yes, it comes out of our budget line for advertising. We have, we have a budget. And so I would say for that advertisement, somewhere probably in the realm of five or six hundred dollars.
And so if we've announced this at least, what, four times? Is this the fourth or the fifth time we've put this in the newspaper?
At least two or three.
Would it be more efficient to have a nurse recruitment thing?
I'm sorry, if I may, Ms. Rogers has had success with getting candidates. The trouble spot is the compensation is where our soft spot is. She's had a couple of folks who gave me offers to, but they declined for the nursing staff this year. And so, and so that's one of the things that we're challenged with.
Does it seem possible that when you make this HR announcement, you can put a salary range in there so you at least have individuals knowing what they're applying for? We don't have to keep announcing for these nurses?
Certainly, yes, we could definitely put the, you know, the pay range in there, yeah.
I'd like to recommend that if that's been the problem, let's tell them upfront what the potential salary is.
Not just with that position with others, like when you go to our website, we can list the salary too when they respond. The issue sometimes is our formula also, so just wanted to be clear too that we have a formula. So you could very well have a salary range, but our formula spits out a number within that range, so we're not always competitive in that standpoint. Is that a fair statement?
Yes. Okay, and then finally, we have an announcement for a cabinet maker. We make the cabinets.
That is a facility services need, and so that is the title of the position, so I'm not quite sure what their exact need is, but that is a position that they have.
I, I just thought that was interesting. Would you be able to speak to whether or not, in fact, this cabinet maker is part of our technical center environment, and they're teaching children how to make cabinets?
No, I don't believe they're teaching children how to make cabinets. Perhaps that's a comment that was a little more odd.
That particular position has not been a cabinet maker. While the district has had cabinet makers in the past, one of the things inside our facility side that will take during this upcoming budget cycle is positions have names for which the jobs they own it. And this is one that has fit in, because at one time districts across the country were making their own cabinets, doing their own locker rooms, things of that sort. However, with the budget pressures that take place, you just can't afford to continue to do that. It's, it's cheaper and it's more efficient to provide in the open market than it is to continue to have your own cabinet.
So exactly what will this?
A general, a general maintenance worker. They'll assess, it'll be a general maintenance worker.
Okay, thank you.
Got it.
All right, thank you.
Next item is three point zero eight, approve the issuance of quitclaim deeds for the Old Armstrong Building and Wickham Court Elementary School.
Mr. Chairman, this is a continuation. On this particular matter, the city has asked us, the school, actually, the school board, to deed the old Armstrong Building and the Wickham Court Elementary site. Currently, the system is not using any, either one of those two sites for any purposes, such as storage or any use such as that, we do not use those sites. In exchange for, if the board were to approve the deed back to the city, then the city would agree that we can utilize space in the South Side Development Center, Community Center, that currently costs about thirty thousand dollars a year. Now, the lease for that space, which is what the private developer expires at the end of two thousand and fifteen, so it's got eighteen months left. It is the city's intent to renew that lease, and they're having discussions with that developer. At this particular site, the city provides a number of services that would be extremely difficult for the city to relocate in another location. So, so per my conversations with city officials, and this and a quarter will buy you a cup of coffee, is that it's their intentions, if they're successful with the developer, to remain there if at all possible, but those conversations need to be completed, and they're not at that moment, to that. So with that, I'm going to let Doug Dumlap give, as Peter has left the city, Doug has stepped into issues regarding this particular project, and discuss what the economic benefits that will be generated for both the school system as well as the community will be if we proceed forward with their recommendations.
Good evening. My name again is Doug Dumlap, and I am the Deputy Director for the Department of Planning and Development Review. We are here, both myself and Ms. Lawson from the Department of Economic Community Development, and also Paul McClellan, representing the administration in pursuit of the mayor's vision for a transformation of the East End community. And this transformation is one in which we look to address a concentration of poverty settled by, in a neighborhood where we find in excess of five hundred units of public housing. What we know tonight is that in that transformation, it will address not only the current Crete Court site, that community, but also the surrounding community and have a positive impact there as well as we reduce the amount of concentration of poverty. We put the first step in that process is identifying and transferring the property that we're discussing tonight. While we know development will occur on the Crete Court site as well, again, that first step that will allow us to maintain the momentum that we built within the community will be associated with gaining control of that site, where we will develop the first two hundred to two hundred and seventy-five units of housing. That first phase will then allow us to then go back onto the Crete Court site and take down properties and begin that second phase. Again, this first, first transfer of property allows us to maintain that momentum. I think we talk about deconcentrating poverty and the impact that we can have on the community. No one can argue the merits of having that, playing that role and having that kind of impact on that neighborhood that has suffered for years from this investment and blight. So question tonight is, is not about whether or not this is an important project. It's a question really goes back to our discussions in reference to the benefit to school, to school administration once this transfer actually takes place. I'll describe to you real quickly in detail, in brief detail, the site itself is comprised of approximately twenty acres. Eleven point six of that property, those acres are owned by school board, controlled by the school board. Nine point six of the acres are actually currently controlled by administration. And so again, it is our intent to have that property transferred so that we can kickstart the project. What we know right now, based on our records, is that property that is controlled and owned by school is valued at approximately two hundred thousand, that's the land cost. That land cost pales in comparison to the investment that we have made over the years in maintaining that property, as well as the cost that we associate and project for the demolition of that project, of the, of the school itself. We know now, without final cost, that the demolition cost will be above, beyond half million dollars, which is three hundred thousand dollars more than the value of the building. We also will incur upfront, as we move to complete this first phase of development, substantial amount for infrastructure improvements and site improvements on that entire site. These infrastructure improvements will involve the installation of the streets, lighting, sewer and water that currently do not exist on the site. Again, a substantial investment will be made there before the point that we can actually begin the construction of the homes, the single-family homes, and also the number of units that will be developed. Last point that I'll make is in reference to the timing. The timing for us ties back to our ability to obtain, apply for funding at the federal and state level to support the project. We anticipate that we will be applying for federal funding before the close of this year, and also state funding in the first quarter of two thousand and fifteen. In order for us to make application for those federal funds that will support this project, we have to have control of the land. Our applications are going in right now, as we begin to look at how we make sure to set zoning, proper zoning for that site. And again, land control is important. It's one of the reasons why for us is critical that we are able to gain control of the property so that we can, again, as I said a couple of times before, maintain the momentum that we have established, working with the community for this transformation. So I will defer to Ms. Lawson, who will share just a few details, and we'll also open up questions.
Attorney?
Really, I'd rather be available to answer questions if I'm right, I'm Jenny Lawson.
Bourne?
Thank you. Mr. Dumlap, you said that federal application for funding is going to be the end of this year, the state for, I guess, some tax credits?
Yes, local tax credits, and that application will probably.
When, by the end of the year, is the federal application due?
At this point, we are still away from the announcement for that, but we have received word from Washington that we should anticipate that it will occur by the end of the year.
I mean, you, you mean the notice of funding available? And then there's, I assume there's a certain application period? It's not going to be announced one day and due the next?
Right, right. It will not, but as you know, it will be a short period between the time that it's announced and the time that we have to submit our formal application. Internally, what we've been doing, we have been working with our development team, the master developer, in preparation, making sure that we're taking a look at the form application and sort of thinking really how we will respond, so we can expedite the process of developing the response to the application.
My name is Tilly.
Hello. I'm doing well, thank you. You said that you were going to be working with the community throughout this process of transformation. What has been, what has been the response from the community thus far? And then could you go into depth as to, as a reminder for me, what's going to happen with the property once the Armstrong specifically building is demolished? What's happening there? Are you all going to be building something similar to that of the Crete Court area? Are you going to be doing mixed-income housing in that area?
I'm Jenny Lawson. I'm going to answer the first part of your question. We've been undergoing, undertaking extensive community engagement. JJ Meyer is our point person for working with the community. We've had a number of meetings, we've engaged PCU to help with leadership training, empowerment. We've taken a trip to Norfolk so they could see what the development looked like. We're about to take another trip. We've been, we've involved the community in the design, we recently had a mini charrette. We've talked about Armstrong and the significance of the school. They've also come up with recommendations as what would be a memorial for old Armstrong. The excitement already has built. It's been a while, it's taken us a while to get trust, to build trust within the community, but we think that we now have a great deal of buy-in about this. People can visualize what it will look like and what it can feel like. As far as the site, excuse me, it will be mixed use. We are talking about deconcentrating poverty, so we're not going to just do new projects here, because that's just geography. What we're going to do is have possibly a third of public housing, one third affordable and one third market grade.
We are trying very hard. You said public housing, what was this other term?
Affordable housing, or what they call workforce housing, and then the other is market grade. A single-family, for sure.
Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, I put you wrong.
One of the things that we've talked to residents of Crete Court about is that we're talking one move. So as we build, then we move. So, as we build, then we move. It's not going to be like we're tearing down Creighton Court. This is phase one, so it's only going to deal with a portion of Creighton Court, but it allows you to free up land on Creighton Court for further development. We have to do one-to-one replacement of units. So, right now it's 540 units that by law we have to replace. And again, if you're talking about deconcentrating poverty, you're looking at different sites that you can build a number of units that will make these mixed income communities that will just a benefit to the city. So, overall, we're talking over a lengthy process, about 1,300 units being developed throughout the season.
Okay, and then, so where the Creighton Court housing is now, you're going to build over where the Armstrong building is and you're going to move them over little by little as the housing becomes available. So, what comes, happens with the Creighton Court development?
First phase is to where the percentage of the people who desire there is going to rent to Armstrong. As we look to develop other sites, we're also going to be rebuilding of Armstrong, but not everybody will be replaced on Armstrong site or whatever. There'll be a number of different things that we're looking at, some economic development there in addition to residential units and also recreation, not the street.
So, if I can have the visual right in my head, Creighton Court demolished, moved over to the Armstrong site, am I giving it?
No, just a portion. So, if you have approximately 275 units that may go on the Armstrong site, approximately one-third of those will be public housing units. So, less than 100, 540 units will be demolished at that point for phase one to move to the Armstrong site.
Right. I mean, I understand that, but ultimately, the end game is that all of that, all of the project development that's currently Creighton Court will be relocated through-
Some public housing will be relocated, but generally speaking, what we're talking about, all of the sites that we do any construction on will be mixed income. So, it won't just be another public housing site. It will be a mixed income community at Armstrong, at Creighton, and wherever else in the city we can do it.
But it will all be on that side of the street. Everything new will be on the opposite side of the street. I'm not from the Washington, I mean, from the Richmond area, from Washington. My mom went to Armstrong, my husband went to Armstrong, so I'm kind of familiar with the area, but I'm just trying, the visual that I'm trying to receive is just everything moving to those 20 acres, all those 20 acres in one location.
So, what you're going to have again is-
I'm sorry, listen.
No, one of the reasons that I think we delayed last time was to make sure that those board members, Ms. Taylor, I think you were still recovering from your accident.
I'm still, I'm still on-
Well, still are. But you were unable to attend the meeting where an in-depth presentation was given. And so, part of the reason I think that we agreed to delay it was that so that the folks from the city could reach out to those members that weren't there to give them the presentation. So, I just asked, was that done?
I reached out to, did you remind me, did you always remember?
Peter Chapman.
Peter Chapman. He was out at the office. He never got back with me. He was the only person that I could remember because that was basically the sidebar discussion I had with him personally. So, I never got the map of what it looks like and then I was out of town, so. So, that's why I'm trying to get this visual as to, I guess in my mind's eye, this is where my conflict lies. I'm looking at a legacy demolished, you know, I'm looking at moving housing, whether it's subsidized, whatever beside what I remember to be a graveyard. And then I'm looking at a new school possibly being built where the housing development currently stands. Is that an accurate assessment of what you're seeing?
We're at this point now really having conversations about building a new school on the Creighton Court site. What you would see, again, on the Armstrong site as long as indicated is possibly 250 units. On the Creighton Court site, you will have public housing units that will remain, but again, the goal is to deconcentrate poverty. And so, that respect, in addition to additional, those public housing units that will be located on the Creighton Court site, there will also be a mix there, very similar to what you will see on the Armstrong site. So, you will see additional single-family homes developed there as well as affordable units, workforce units developed on that site as well.
Could we possibly move the public housing through different areas of the town? I mean-
That's something that we're also talking about.
Because to me, if you want to concentrate with those, still those 540 units are still in that vicinity, that's not-
No, we're not, the plan is not to have them all located on those two sites. So, we are looking at other sites, other opportunities where we may be able to alert some of those residents to other locations. We have control over another site in these things that we are considering, our Form 7 builds, complexes that we're considering.
Okay, excuse me, one second. Would you all want some more time, Ms. Taylor, or?
For us, it would be up to Ms. Taylor.
I mean, I want to make an informed decision.
She had tried to get an appointment, she had the YAG appointment. We were going to have a vote tonight.
Well, can we delay the vote tonight then? I mean, I just, I have a concern about rebuilding houses in areas that are already concentrated.
That's good. So, they, they, hold on one second, okay. So, y'all heard that? Mrs. Thurman?
Thank you, Charles. Thank you all for coming tonight. The Facilities Task Force or the administration have a recommendation on how to proceed with it, but assuming that that's got some connection to what we're doing as a school system, district-wide?
Well, I mean, we haven't had a specific discussion at the Facilities Task Force level at this time because the Facilities Task Force will be driven by data and the data is still being compiled as to exactly the assets that will be needed for the district moving forward to ensure that the schools are where they need to be, often, you know, with the facilities to meet the program needs that the district wants to go move forward. So, in that regard, this will be Tommy's opinion. During all of our discussions on the facilities and where we're looking, you know, these two sites have not come up in either one of those discussions. The other thing to consider with both of these sites is those buildings are extremely old. Both of those buildings have been shut down for a substantial period of time. If we go and bring a building back up that's been shut down for a period of time, in most cases, we're going to be looking at renovation of that particular facility. And depending on the percentage of renovation that we incur, we then have to make that building in full compliance with the current code. So, a lot of our buildings, for example, the Thomas Jefferson parking situation, the code today has a certain number of parking spots that we need there, which we do not need. But when that building was constructed with the last addition, we did need it, and that was many, many, many years ago. So, please keep that in mind, that if we need to renovate a building, there's a very good chance that we're going to incur substantial cost because we need to bring it up to the current building code.
Okay, Mrs. Thurman?
So, bottom line is these are buildings that are boarded up that we are not using and the land value essentially subs 200,000 for both parcels?
Just remark.
How much is the Creighton Court? Whitman Court?
Yeah, I believe Whitman is, the land value is about 271,000.
Okay. I just had Ms. Gray lean over to me and say the assessed values are in the millions. Is that accurate from what you all understand?
From the assessor's site, 7.4 million for the Armstrong site and 2 million for the Whitman Court site.
But those assessed values are not realistic. I mean, Ms. Gray, just, just the cost-
I understand what assessed values mean. I know that the assessor is obligated by the Code of Virginia to assess the real value of property, so we're saying that that's not what he did on this property or on the West Hampton property. That's fine. This is all too familiar to 30,000 a year in compensation for properties that are assessed at millions of dollars, and that's what happened with the Redskins deal, and it's all too familiar.
But keep this in mind, the, their estimate on how much it's going to cost to abate Armstrong because of what's inside that building, when that building's taken down, it will have to be completely abated because the asbestos is thick. By law, not one part of that asbestos can reach the air. I think they severely underestimated the cost to abate the Armstrong site. I think it'll easily be seven figures, very, very easy to abate that site.
Okay. Last one, Mrs. Thurman?
So, I guess where I was getting with that is whether it's 200 or whether it's 2.9 million, whatever, I mean, we're not going to use these properties, no, under any scenario of foreseeable future. But so, where I'm getting with this is though, that it's a rare situation where we are in a situation with the city where we have something that they are asking for. And so, I'm wondering if there is not a, there are not better opportunities for us to get besides just, you know, whatever the rental cost is on this South Side Community Center. You know, we've got a pretty big price tag on facilities and maintenance issues that we need taken care of. And so, that's, that's my concern is, you know, I think it's a, it's a very lawful goal of what the city is doing here. I think it's a good thing. We want to work with them, but I think if the shoe were on the other foot, the city would be trying to get the best deal they could from us. And so, I think we don't want to necessarily leave anything on the table, given the needs that we have.
Ms. Seb?
A quick question, Mr. Krantz. If we go to vote on this, well, no, if we don't vote on this, what's the contingency plan for taking the Welcome Center off the table as part of this deal? How can we continue to move forward with some discussion on that?
We could continue discussion, but we'd have to run a family then at that point. But another option was what we initially started, the site that we initially started for that Welcome Center, that if for some reason the board voted against this transaction, and so therefore the Welcome Center was taken off the table and with the challenge we have with our budget, which I'm aware of, then I'd probably go back to the site that we first explored and get that up and running very quickly.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am?
Ms. Jones?
We have access to the, the Welcome Center, South Side Plaza. We did this.
I think we'd have it in less than two weeks because the site's there, we would just have to document and memorialize the understanding between the parties, but I don't think, Councilor, I'll defer to you, but I think it's pretty straightforward that it's something that can be done very quickly, so I'd say about two weeks. Thank you.
Okay. Make a comment as the seventh district representative. I have worked very closely with this project. I believe in this project and I believe it overall will benefit all of us eventually and just wanted to go and represent that. Ms. Taylor?
Well, first, are we voting on this tonight? And second, in regards to the Whitman Court, if that property is demolished, is there going to be more development of housing in that area?
On this point, Ryan, if you could be fairly brief, because again, I asked you all, and she's asking these questions, and she put out for a meeting with Mr. Chapman, you know, do you all want to try to have a meeting with her so she can be clear on the project? I'm giving you all the opportunity, or are we going to vote tonight?
If we answer this question, do you have more questions? Do you want to have a meeting with us that we can sit down and talk to you?
I would love that.
We would love to do that.
You guys still ready to vote, Terry?
I can make a recommendation, man. Maybe we'll list to the October 20th school board.
Colleagues?
What's your name?
October 20th, so Ms. Taylor, you know, she was injured, tried to reach out to Mr. Chapman the other day, yeah, that's why we delayed before. She's the one person that has not had that opportunity. They're willing to give her an opportunity. She wants an opportunity. Delayed to October 20th. Yes, sir.
Good question. How does that, I'm just curious in terms of the choice, how's that work with the timeline of this project?
It's pushing us up against the law because we have to know, we have to do a zoning change and a number of other things and so that, you know, what we want is a positive response. So, if there's two weeks to get the positive response, we're going to have to take that chance.
Okay. October 20th agenda? Any objections to that?
Is it going to delay the community development, the development of the percentage of the population? Oh, okay, okay.
It's going to be later?
Yes. Okay.
He said yes, then?
Yes, ma'am, I guess.
Okay, that's what the-
I apologize.
That's okay, no, I just wanted to make sure that everyone's down to their own speed.
All right, yes, hold on. All right, ma'am, pleasure. Thank you all.
The next time this three councilor, I receive a pool recommended history textbook adoption.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board and Dr. and Superintendent Benton. Tonight, the Department of Curriculum and Instruction brings forward recommended textbooks in the content area of social studies for your approval. Ms. Lewis had the hand. Thank you. In 2013, Richmond Public Schools formed committees and went through the recommended steps for school districts to consider textbooks for approval. The process was sound and it included the use of VDOE rubrics, committees for each level. The committees included teachers, stakeholders, parents, administrators, central office folks. It was the time period where the books were out for public display and there was, of course, consideration of alignment to these books for the Virginia Framework, of course. Of particular note is the fact that, of course, these history and social studies textbooks are on the state recommended list. These are approved books. Richmond put the time and effort into the textbook review in 2013. We would like to move forward with your approval on these and this will allow us to begin to build out our current list of approved textbooks. We do have some textbooks in sort of a honing pattern and it's time to make sure we've updated them with the things that the committees have approved and recommended.
I would move to adopt the textbooks as recommended by the administration.
Second.
All right, moved and second. Any questions? Ms. Seb?
Yes, sir. So, this process is different from what we just went through for the books we just adopted at the elementary level?
I think it was probably the same. No, it is, it is a process with a committee and the books are put out in various public locations, they are looked at. It happened a while back and I'm not positive why it wouldn't have come to the board a little bit sooner. It could be that funding wasn't immediately available, but no, it would be, the approval process for textbooks is a standard, requires committees, requires the use of the rubrics and requires a comment period.
Dr. Benton, Mr. Coleman, can you all confirm that we actually went through this process when it would have happened? process when it would have happened?
The spring of 2013.
The only thing I can call this is, only to ask, wasn't.
The history instructional specialist, Ms. Stevens, is here this evening, and she actually wasn't the specialist then, but she was on the committee. She was the middle school, one of the middle school teachers that was on the committee.
Okay. I mean, because I specifically recall recently having an opportunity to meet the different people that were gonna bring the books, I guess, to the elementary level, the math books.
Right. Publishers always bring them and set them out and make sure that folks can look and provide written comment, and that's right. This would have happened a whole year.
Ms. Coleman, can you speak to your level of confidence that these books are aligned somehow to the SOL, that we're gonna be teaching a curriculum that the children will be prepared to take those texts?
Well, the biggest vote of confidence I have is that the Virginia State Department has approved them. And there are publishers that bring VDOE a book and say, "We would love to be on your approved list, and here's our history book." And Virginia says, "It's not closely enough aligned with our standards." So these Richmond shows books that are approved by the State Department of Virginia. And then the committee, from my reading of their work, had some other things in mind as well. Of course, approved textbooks was the first, but there were things like document-based questions, which provide some rigor. There were some features of these textbooks that it sounds like the committee considered carefully.
Okay. For the record, I'd like to get a copy of what the committee submitted, what's out there, because I just have no recollection of this.
That's great.
I'm just wondering where our time will end, because I've got an early, early morning tomorrow, and I think we need to get back on track with our timing.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Seb. All right. The motion.
The motion was made.
Still.
I'm sorry, I was talking to the city workers when you started your presentation. Hello, hi.
Hi.
The books that you had, let's for history, do you have a count on how many books, textbooks you're expecting to?
To purchase? Well, what happens is, this is the first step, the textbooks would need to be approved by you all before we could even begin the process of things like, you know, what grade levels, what are, what are the publishers gonna quote us as prices? So no, I don't have specifics on purchase. We really want the textbook list to be brought up to date and honor the work of the people that were on those committees. So this is really just the first step in approval process.
Okay. And I ask that because I was noticing reading through some of the reports, that the enrollment numbers were elevated for the most part in most of our schools. So I was just wondering if you all took that consideration? And then the second reason is because my daughter uses a science book, and within her class, within her school, they have three different textbooks for the same subject matter, and the teachers having to make three different lessons plans, and so, and so forth. So I'm wondering, is that a problem when it comes to ordering textbooks? Because that happens more times than it should, that you don't have enough. And also, is there gonna be some type of supplement books? And then lastly, there's been a lot of discrepancy with history and the level of accuracy in the history and the news as of late, I'm sure you're aware of. So how do you deal with that with a subject matter such as history?
Well, I think that the State Department did get some, obviously got some bad press for allowing the adoption of, I think it was a sixth grade book or a fifth grade book a few years ago. I think they tried hard to remedy that. And again, I think that we would be on shaky ground if we went off what the State Department allowed. So that's our biggest way to combat some kind of inaccuracies or a misaligned textbook is to adopt what the State Department says. I was a principal at the time, and we all got the little stickies that we had to put in the book and fix the problem, and then that was a problem with the publisher, but that's a little more at the State Department level. As far as different books in science, you will likely see me return to bring the recommendations of the Science Committee as well in the near future. I do think that just having a really robust and very current and very up-to-date textbook list, approved books that are well-aligned, is an important step in, for my department.
And this is the last one, I promise it's the last one. With you all considering the African-American history, would you be considering that with this whole adoption process, African-American textbooks?
Well, I think what happens is, there's a difference in, between what's called a district-wide adoption, like World History One gives a verified credit, and, you know, students are needing that, needing verified credits to graduate. So the State Department puts out approved books in various areas. Many times, like even for, for an African-American history class, for, even for an AP class, there may not be a state-led book listed, but we would want to examine using the same rubric, organization, content, you know, the right reading levels for, depending on what grade level. We would like to have the process for text adoption. Ms. Kane has really pushed us to, to really get a very clear process in place. So yes, we want to look carefully at what texts to use for that elective.
Now, we're calling this adoption.
It doesn't fall under this adoption because, again, this was only, this was done in 2013, only on subjects that are sort of those mandated. It's either an SOL-based class or an end of course. This is all standards of learning-based, and that would be an elective.
Okay. Thank you.
Great, ma'am, pleasure.
The motion was made by Mr. Sterling and was advocated by Ms. Gray to adopt the history textbooks. Mr. Sterling?
Yes.
Ms. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Harris Mohammed?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Pinkney Adams?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Motion, thanks, is eight, zero. Next item is 3.10, we'll receive an academic city council update.
This is attached to your board docs, and given the tight schedule that we're all gonna try to streamline it, read it. The intent is to provide you with information relative to data from the past year, or relates to, compared to the year before. It also shares some insight on the financial forecast a little bit, and then finally giving you a intro to the current work that's being done on the academic improvement plan. What you have before you is a little bit of the needs assessment data that is used, being used to develop the academic improvement plan. It is also similar information that you've been given into the past with regards to some key areas, like the number of schools fully accredited, the number of schools showing improvement. As you can see, there was a significant number of schools that showed increases in performance on SOL pass rates. And you can show improvement, but you only get accredited if you hit 75, 70, 77. So while you may have, or graduation rate, so if you don't hit 85% graduation rate, which you have 80% graduation rate, you'd be accredited more. So you would not get credit for being fully accredited. When you look at showing improvement, you can see 2012, 2013, that small number of schools showed improvement by category, but if you go to this year, next slide, you'll see a significant jump in the number of schools that actually showed improvement from 2013 to 2014. And as alluded to, you can see some pretty lofty increases, like in English, with schools with 2015, you know, a lot of double-digit increases, the same thing in math. You see large jumps in, in performance, in the percentage of children who are passing the SOL test. Next one. Again, when you think of the 2012, 2013 slide, you will see again, what I alluded to earlier, that the work that had begun, we're trying to improve the alignment, which the assessment has shown some initial results of improvement. Again, a number of double-digit increases for a number of schools across the board. You also had, it is not here, a significant increase in number of schools with regards to the graduation rate. We have both Huguenot and Armstrong hit the 83%, which gives you provisional graduation rate accreditation. So you need 82% was Armstrong, for example, up from 71%. So again, large growth in the number of our schools. Next. So, you know, there were six areas for strategic planning that went into the district. We don't know where the board is on finalizing whether they're gonna keep, tweak, change, but we tried to, Mrs. Kane, align where possible the work that we're doing. But the key thing is number six, aligning people and resources strategically to maximize the endpoint, the impact, and which to us may we give some key information regarding financing.
Mr. Drew, and I did on Friday, and received an overview of where the state is from the perspective of the economic view of what's coming. Looks like we're headed for, they're estimating somewhere around a 4% reduction maybe for K-12 and 16, close the gap. So it's a flat or reduced picture overall in the state. What's buoyed the state so far primarily is the fact that we're so heavily influenced by the military community and federal community. That's what kind of kept us afloat, and through their, their forecasts, a skew is why they're revising downward at this point. A piece of good news is that the school of Virginia retirement system had a 15% return last year, so the, what we thought was gonna be a huge increase over the next three biennium for our retirement rates, they don't anticipate it's gonna be necessary at this point. Hopefully that holds. So these are just some key highlights that we shared with council members this afternoon about sales tax collections. Last year fell short by 800,000. We can probably expect that same news this year, unless something changes. K-3 class size, we laid out that we have another 1.2 million on the table that we could realize in state revenue if we can accommodate the staffing. It's gonna take some additional local resources to make that happen, about $2.4 million worth of staff to get that 1.2 million. But the upside is the, it's what's good for instruction and kids if we can achieve that. Charge for services, allowing for actual expenditures, transportation, where even about 800,000 is being contributed to the deficit that we have in there annually. That deficit's been increasing over the last several years. It was $3 million last year. The transportation budget operations exceeded budget. Instruction materials, we have a budgeted item in there, it's just not realistic. It says that we're gonna get recovery for the fees that we deliver through the warehouse. It's overstated, so we're gonna need to make up that million dollars or thereabouts in the 16 budget. And then just went over to major by the major eight.
One of the key questions, the council is on transportation, why do we support the budget? The answer was the issue of buses, the number, the way we pick up, zoning, and answer to all of the book. All of the book contributed, we need to minimize the buses, because that creates a competitive challenge, break that out, enable efficiency, but it also gets to a number of stops, the way we spin buses, large chunk of line of vehicle service. It is continually blowing us out of the water with costs.
The expenditure outlook in 15.
It's just a quick one. Are we still paying a fuel surcharge to the city for gasoline for the buses?
Is there a question?
We are. Can we get an estimate next meeting on how much that's costing? Or just an email, a quick email? So now it's I have the money.
Okay, on the, from the major eight categories, the state appropriation categories, we're ran through some of the major initiatives, we're gonna be addressing during the 16 budget what costs to be assigned to these things as we dive into them more deeply. So we review these major initiatives, the, that discussion's coming, with Ms. Kane. Division-wide, we're looking at the compensation classification study, it hasn't been done over a decade here, to again, look at the internal equity and external competitiveness of our compensation system, which is key since 85% of our budget is predicated on salaries and benefits. Updating the teacher contracts to 200 days from 191 days, which keeps us in compliance with the code of Virginia. Employ benefits, we're against self-insure jointly with the city. We've been having several meetings here recently, they're estimating maybe to 10%. It's unknown at this point. We'll get ready to go out with an RFP next year, so may have, or maybe we'll get signals in the period. Looking at plan and design changes, so all that's really unknown at this point, I guess. Workers' compensation, just going by experience and the track that we are on and have been on for the last couple of years, we're probably gonna need to add 600,000 to budget for workers' comp unless something changes there. Transportation, that's what we spoke about a minute ago, in that category. Maintenance utilities budget was over about 500,000. We're gonna be visiting other initiatives in both of those areas, transportation, maintenance, to see if we can find other efficiencies or ways to offset some of those costs, so that again, we can re-channel the dollars to the primary initiatives that we prefer to spend the money on, the instruction. Other areas, the CIP, which must fleet modernization, facility rightsizing, modernization, and age-back improvements, and just reviewed that those things are ongoing and will be factored into the 16 budget as well. Administration reorganization this year with a focus on school improvement, the tenancy health area, the primary initiatives there is based, family, also family and community engagement, and the fact that this year was our first year of that transition, and we put on the table that, that we did not get all the funds to support that program. We designed it, wanted it to be effective, so 16 will be our second year of that transition, and we'll be asking for the balance of those funds to operate that program the way it needs to be. Medical reimbursement, we just put on a requisition in to acquire a new system, which was more in pay for itself, and additional revenue we should generate through that system this year. A lot of time and energy goes into that reimbursement system. So that's an area that can generate some additional revenues for 16 and for this year as well. Technology, student information system, the new that we played this year is gonna help in tracking our longitudinal data and again, supporting the mission that we're all about. And then wireless infrastructure build-out, gonna help us support the one-on-one computing and share, because we know that technology is the critical in delivering instruction instead.
So, good evening. So, good evening. I'm going to make this brief because I know we've been here for a long time, but just a little bit of background, what you're looking at is ACT core practices. Our academic improvement plan is going to be grounded in the research of ACT's National Center for Educational Achievement. And really what that work talks about is practices that have been proven to be effective for high-performing districts as opposed to other practices that have been somewhat effective in average performing or even low-performing districts. So we look at five different themes, we'll talk about those different themes in just a minute, but I want you to notice the division of labor. So there are practices that are expected at each level of the organization, practices that are expected at the district level, at the school level, and then at the classroom level. So we'll talk about theme one. Theme one has to do with curriculum and academic goals. Theme two is about staff selection, that's for leadership as well as teachers and building capacity around those employees. Theme three has to do with the instructional tools that we use, the programs and strategies that we implement in classrooms. Theme four is about monitoring the performance of our schools and including the progress. And then theme five has to do with the interventions and adjustments that we make based on the data regarding our student needs. So the purpose of the plan obviously is to create a comprehensive plan that's going to be centered on not only improving overall student achievement, but accelerating that progress for all students toward meeting or exceeding goals. And of course, our goals are really centered around two major areas, and again, that's one, increasing academic achievement and reducing those gaps between student groups and among student groups. It is not uncommon to see large gaps between groups like students who receive special education services and our core, and our general population, as well as students who have English as their second language. And so our work will include not only increasing academic achievement for all students, but decreasing the gaps between student groups. The second piece of our, our work is going to be centered on both short-term and long-term goals so that folks can experience some degree of success and keep that momentum moving toward some of the longer-term goals. And again, those five areas are listed here. So what we've done was we looked at each of the divisions of labor, the district practices, school practices, and classroom practices, and as Dr. Ben mentioned a little bit earlier, we tried to align our current strategic plan indicators with this work. So sometimes you will see a repeat, and one perfect example is when we talk about aligning the resources that we have to make a maximum impact on the work that we're doing. So you'll see that several different places. So just, just an example of what it is that we're talking about, when we talk about those curriculum and academic goals, we're talking about what Terry discussed a little bit earlier, and that's providing clear prioritized learning objectives at the district level so that stu-, we are really clear on what students are expected to master, and those textbooks have a great deal to do with that because our work must be aligned with the standards of learning. At the school level, we're looking at setting expectations for reaching those goals. Our key work is about teaching and learning, improving teaching and learning. A few weeks ago, we met with all of our principals, and Dr. Ben did a presentation over the summer, some of you may have been there at the Institute, the Leadership Institute, and we talked about, one, keeping the main thing the main thing, but we talked about improving teaching and learning as a core focus for our school district. At the classroom level, we're talking about studying and using the district's written curriculum to plan all instruction because we know we have to have that alignment that Ms. Harris Muhammad talks about, that alignment between curriculum, instruction, and assessment. The, the last one is of course, the current strategic plan indicator, which aligns with this theme one, and that is to develop and implement engaging and innovative and rigorous curriculum that will optimize learning. Theme two, again, talks about staff selection, so of course, at the district level, we're talking about providing strong principals, a talented teacher pool, and multiple opportunities for job embedded and layered professional development. At the school level, we're also talking about continuing that professional development, but we're also talking about selecting and developing teachers that are, meet high-quality expectations, highly qualified teachers. At the classroom level, we're talking about giving teachers an opportunity to collaborate as a primary means for improving instruction. We know now that whether we're talking about collaboration among teachers, between grade levels vertically, or within the same content or within the same grade level, there are maximum opportunities for us to increase student achievement when we give teachers an opportunity to collaborate. The RPS strategy for the strategic plan talks about recruiting and retaining the highest quality teachers and faculty members, so that is in direct alignment with this theme. For theme three, those are the instructional tools, the programs and the strategies that we use. Of course, at the district level, we are always engaged with providing evidence and standards-based instructional tools. At the school level, they are doing the same thing because they're following our lead at the district level, but we're also talking about promoting those strategies and building structures within the school that help to build academic and support academic rigor, such as principals and administrators building those schedules that will allow time for teachers to collaborate with each other. At the classroom level, we're, we're talking about using those instructional tools to support learning that we know are evidence-based.
All right, I have a check, I'm checking with my colleagues here. Anything here to anybody, because this is the ongoing plan and we've got it right here.
Yeah, we're making a recommendation to you for the plan. The, the idea is for varied individuals to be meeting in groups, and then we'll come back to you in December with a recommendation for an academic plan. This is just about the parts that we're going to include and the process that we're going to use to create, develop that plan.
Okay, I see you have a timeline here, did you want to talk about that?
That was the last one. So our timeline actually started over the summer when we started to work with administrators on the five core practices. On the five core practices, we continue, thank you, we continue with that right now as we begin to put our teams together to really develop those, those core practices and the strategies that we'll use in our academic improvement plan, and that'll go on until December, until we come back to you with a recommendation. From December to February, we'll be doing presentations, one of course to you and another at the, during budget development. So those are a series of presentations that will be communicating what our recommendations are for approval. And then from January through the next couple of years, we will be implementing those deliverables, those things that we believe will increase student achievement and reduce those achievement gaps.
Okay, colleagues, any questions for Kane, Mrs. Evans?
Mrs. Kane, where I am stuck is schools started in September.
Who started in September?
Schools started in September, and I appreciate that, you know, this is some stuff that's going to be put in place. Can you talk to me about what's happening right now to make sure that the kids are getting ready to get, to get us to this point where this stuff is going to be put in place?
So currently, we have made some adjustments to our curriculum framework. We've also implemented the lesson plan that all teachers are using. So there are some curriculum features that we have improved already, so teachers started with that. We did professional development with teachers, the first two workdays for teachers over the summer, and we continue. We probably had over fifty professional development opportunities to continue to develop teachers on that curriculum framework and how they have a plan using that lesson plan. We've done some work with principals on understanding the components of that lesson plan and the curriculum framework. So lots of work has been done already to, to get teachers and administrators started.
Follow-up. Oh, the, the two hundred hours, the professional development, going from this one to the current, what we're doing currently, is that going to be in place for next school year?
We are, we will make a recommendation, yes, for that to be in place. Dr. Ben may have some ideas for a couple of schools to begin sooner, I'm not sure if that will be a recommendation, but yes.
Yeah, the two hundred day will be something we bring to you for next year, but as you know, priority schools, there's an extended time that's supposed to be in place in those priority schools. Some of them we will bring in here if we fare out of that switch now. The issue for us is the state code talks about two hundred day, ten-month contract, and I've gotten feedback from the state superintendent in writing, and he believes that that is supposed to be a mandate, not an option. Now, some may differ on that, but our reason for bringing it up is not about anything other than, these are nine days we have not, as we've talked about, had available in our calendar year, professional development, all those other things that, other districts, because we're, one has the shortest period in the region. So it's about time for teachers to get better, not, you know, more instruction-based for students. All right, Dr. Jones and Mrs. Stewart.
Just a quick question, you mentioned, I kind of followed up to, you have this question in terms of what's happening right now, and you mentioned professional development that has taken place already with teachers. How do you know, or how do we know that was effective, how do we know it worked? What gives us confidence that they're off and running? How would you?
So part of the work with that is with principals, and we've worked with principals to understand what they should be looking for when they go into classrooms. Many of our principals require, so if you visit schools, many of the teachers will have their lesson plan at a place where you can grab it either at the door or just inside the classroom. Certainly if you ask them for it, they will have it. So we're at different places in the understanding, the teachers' understanding of how to use that, that lesson plan, which is key to this work, but we're working with them, we continue to offer professional development, and we ourselves are out in schools, and, and we're looking at those lesson plans, we're looking at instruction. Last week or, or the week before, we sent to principals a walkthrough observation form, which is aligned to the lesson plan, so that as we're walking through classes, whether it's say, a couple of minutes or their regular observation forms, they are looking at what we ought to be seeing based on the improvements that are being made. So there are multiple areas on the instruction.
Thank you.
Mr. Holman, it looks a great plan and very detailed. One of the things that we had talked about last budget cycle was looking at the policy of if a student is not reading on grade level by the end of the school year, that there would be mandatory summer school or they could ultimately be held back. And just as, as we've been talking about this realigning the curriculum and the SOL scores, it's just sort of, I've wondered how much of it also has to do with students who are reading below grade level and the fact that students go from learning how to read to content-based learning. And so, I guess that's the question, and, and something that I would ask that we study and, and you all come back with a recommendation on as part of this plan is, you know, if kids aren't reading at grade level by the time they end of the school year, all this other stuff is really for naught, I think, at the end of the day, if you get down to rest tax. So, especially as we gear up for this next budget cycle in the, in the winter, end of fall and into the early winter, that's really something I'd like to be able to look at, is do we have a policy that says mandatory summer school or potentially held back or, or something else? But you all are the experts in professionals, I, that just seems to me like that, that could be something that could, I think, really have good outcomes.
Thank you for that. Part of this work involves a review of policies that may create barriers to getting this work done and that, or, or challenges, and ensuring that we have the right policies in place, so that will be a natural part of this work. And, and as we know, students learn at different levels, you know, and at different rates, and I mean, just as you and I are different individuals, we probably learn differently and demonstrate our learning differently. So we do have to look closely at, you know, what the policies regulate in terms of what actions occur after it is understood that students aren't learning. Our goal is to intervene, you know, formatively throughout the course of school year, so we aren't getting to the end of the school year saying, oh my goodness, this child is not reading on grade level.
But if that's something that you can come up with a plan and that could potentially be incorporated to this larger plan of how to address if kids are not reading at grade level by certain points, we'd love to see that.
I guess I'm just going to speak as candidly as I can. It's my humble opinion that a lot of this presentation, this glossed over, I don't feel like I'm hearing the realities of what I'm hearing from my constituency, from teachers in schools, and my personal experience as a parent. I know the teachers went into school having to learn the Aspen new software. They were kind of all over the place trying to get their classrooms in order, all this and that, so how could they possibly have had any type of professional development through that incredibly stressful time of year? How could that possibly have happened?
Well, that was, that was the plan, that was what it was expected, and so that did occur. So we have multiple side sheets and agendas and activities, and we've gotten lots of feedback from our teachers as a result of the professional development. So if your, if your question is, how could it happen? Did it happen? It absolutely did happen, and it's expected. And I know that multiple responsibilities are laid at the feet of, of teachers and administrators, but these are the things that are required in order to help students progress. So professional development in our field is part of our work, and so it's expected.
Okay, well, I, I'm just hearing some that differs from what you're saying. I'm hearing some teachers who given a choice. I know of teachers who are not present during that time period, so if you could show some type of proof that this expected development is happening, some type of law that can be presented to the board, because my experience in working in this district in itself, that has not been the case. And that's incredibly concerning for me.
So we're making that turn.
Say it again.
We're making that turn.
I, I appreciate, yeah, but I mean, then again, we had that whole debacle over at Lucille Brown with the students and their schedules and that's, so with all of that going on in itself, how is this professional development, what does this professional development even look like? Is it pertaining to the core subjects, elective teachers? It's just hard to...
I could respond to some of that right now if you like, or I could just share with you the proof of who attended and what our sessions were, and we were at several different locations on the twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh, I think that was.
Did it attend to all two thousand teachers?
So just like any given day, somebody might not show up. So we offer it, and those two days were required for professional development, and so teachers did attend those two days. I cannot stand here and tell you that every single teacher was present on that day, but we certainly offered multiple opportunities in addition to those two days, but most days after that, excuse me. So it continues to go on, and we know it's a focus and a priority, and we really are trying to build a culture of learning, not only for our students, but for our administrators and our teachers. So it is, it is a mindset, it is a challenge for some folks because they aren't used to doing it, but again, it's the expectation, and we'll continue to press forward because the better we are at our craft, the better our students perform.
And I appreciate that, but being that, you know, we pay you guys the big bucks, I would be appreciative if you could show us something concrete to show that what you are planning in your, in your administrative leadership meetings and what you're trying to get our staff to implement, if you could have something concrete, physical evidence to show and exactly who, not just who's doing it, whether it is being done, but who's not receiving the training, because I know that some are. And so I would like to have the holistic pictures, I like to see the good, bad, and the ugly.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Taylor. All right, Mrs. Evans?
Follow-up. Based on what Mr. Stewart was speaking to with regard to making sure the children are reading on grade level, I decided to pull out my calendar. Our interim period ended on October second. Do you all have any... Do you all have any information to show where our children are in this interim, right now? Who's, who needs improvement in reading? Who is, you know, where they need to be in reading? As well, and I recognize that this is not academic, but as far as, do we even know how many children? Our count, I think, went in on September 30th. Do we have any attendance data that we can correlate to how many students were in these classrooms? Exactly what they, what were they being taught for this interim period? And how do we assess it?
So I can speak to a few of those. And yes, we do have data to tell you what students learn, because if teachers are following our curriculum framework, then there's a sculpting sequence that comes along with that. So it tells us what should be taught at each point during the school year. So yes, we can certainly get that information for you. I know that as far as Aspen is concerned, yes, September 30th was the cut date, but it has, it takes a couple of days or weeks, what have you. Yeah, sometime around the middle of October, we'll have final numbers for that.
Thanks, Ms. Mohammed.
For the sake of time, if we have additional questions, because it's almost 10:00, and this lady and I are receiving this type of information, it's just, it's good, I'm not saying it's not good information, it's just a lot, and it's 10:00. And we still have a robust agenda. Can you just send me the question? I'm suggesting more colleagues that will send me the chairman of the questions, and he can send those to the individuals that need to address them. And then they have a business they can give back to the board members.
Yes, and this is an ongoing process.
It is.
Administration is totally open to people being with them, getting clarity.
I'm not saying they're not.
No, 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 no. I'm reemphasizing that, as you can see. So at this point, impressive. Ms. Payne, thank you so much.
Thank you.
And thank you, Ms. Mohammed, really, I wasn't... Adam Clark.
The next item is 3.11, receive approved budget transfers. Playground effort.
Very straightforward.
All right, yeah, just go ahead and do your thing there. It's great.
All, what I'm asking for is permission to correct inside of our ADA, it's not C I P on that ADA, $500,000. Those funds will be used for us to upgrade the rubber matting that we have in our playgrounds throughout the district, which is in 44 locations. Any questions?
Okay. You have a motion, Ms. Epps.
Second.
Adam Clark, any discussion? I think we're on that. Adam Clark?
Motion's made by Mr. Cervin, seconded by Ms. Harris Mohammed, Mr. Cervin. Ms. Gray.
Yes.
Mr. Bowman.
Yes.
Mrs. Taylor. Mrs. Harris Mohammed. Dr. Jones. Mrs. Pinkney.
Yes.
Mrs. Larson.
Yes.
Mr. Coleman.
Yes.
Motion passes 1-0. The next item is 3.12, receive approved constitutional services policy.
Board members, as we've already had comments from a few of our colleagues on the time, this is one of those things, again, it's the draft of it, so you have it, and we can discuss it at a, at a next meeting, okay? First read, too. All right.
The next item is...
No, this is the first read. This is the first read. Again, this is what I'm saying. We're going to have a discussion when we, okay, go ahead, you have a question. Okay, go ahead.
I'm not comfortable with redirecting my constituency to administration if, if, am I talking about the wrong thing?
My voice?
I can't see from there. This is the one that was said that if a constituent comes to a board member to redirect them to the superintendent, does that work? Is that what we're referencing? Yes?
Yes.
Okay. If a, if one of my constituents is to approach me with a concern, then I am not comfortable with redirecting their concern to a superintendent and his staff and waiting for them to get back with me. I would like to be able to see that process through from beginning to end. Also, I have many constituents who come to me confidentially, and they're not comfortable with going to administration. And so in that respect, I would not feel comfortable with making any changes to that policy. And secondly, I would never abide by a policy if it were to change.
Again, this is the first read. If you do have suggestions for changes, then send them to me. All right, Adam Clark.
Next item is 3.13, receive a response to the board's compensation audit.
Vice chair will speak to that.
So this is, the last time the city auditor came to us, this was, I think, the only audit that didn't have the management's response. And part of that was because at the time, we didn't have a person.
The manager.
Yep, okay. And so they pulled together the response. We put it on the agenda so that folks could receive it tonight, but we're going to plan on discussing it at the next meeting, if that is okay with everybody. And I think the city's also waiting for coffee, so we'll be sharing that with them as well. Okay? So we'll have it on the 20th, the general discussion.
Okay, Ms. Clark.
The next item is 3.14, receive approved budget transfers. And those transfers will, I'd wait for you to read it.
Any other questions?
Comments, Ms. Cervin?
No, sir. No other such questions.
All right.
I move that we approve the budget transfers.
Please move, Ms. Gray, seconded by Mr. Cervin, Mr. Cervin. Ms. Gray.
Yes.
Mr. Bowman. Mrs. Harris Mohammed. Dr. Jones. Mrs. Pinkney.
Budget transfers.
May I purposefully ask, with, I am still struggling with these budget transfers that happened back in July, September, now we're approving them, and then when I look at some of them, folks should have been better prepared for this stuff. So I say all that to say, I'm going to say yes, but I really need a better understanding of these budget transfers. I think sometimes in our, in this field, money doesn't come the way that we wish it would come, or in the timeframe that it would come. So a lot of these things that, and I'm just helping you, you know, because we backed this before, you know, we got to respond. So oftentimes...
Ms. Cervin, pardon me.
I, I, I... That's, I totally understand what you're doing, and you're solidly allowing me to do that, okay? I'm really trying my best. So, Ms. Epps, again, I hear you, I understand it. I'm sure Mr. West Bay, the colleagues, love to explain, okay? And, Miss, we got to finish the voting, so, Ms. Epps, your vote?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Taylor?
Ms. Morrison.
Yes.
Mr. Coleman.
Yes.
Motion passes 8, 4, 10. The next item is 3.15, receive approved technology leases.
Chairman, four members talked about, and the, these are two critical items for technology that reached end of life. And while one was the I boss, the web filter, was a piece of equipment, it's been on the long, for almost a year, forced to test, it's through, to be very effective. And so we need to purchase it. We were hoping maybe to get it with year-end funds, but we can't, couldn't do that, so we're recommending a lease on it. And we went through the process, and this money to fund this lease isn't the technology budget that was approved. And that is the same also for the core hardware in the server of the operation. And again, that has reached end of life, needs to be updated, and also is on a lease basis, so, short term, but, so recommending your approval of these leases, so we can move forward with those acquisitions. Okay? So I move that we approve the technology leases presented by the commissioners.
Second. The motion was made by Dr. Jones, seconded by Ms. Gray, Mr. Cervin.
Hold on, she has a question.
I do have a quick question. Did we compare the purchase to the lease, and we come out better leasing it, or is it because we don't have enough money to purchase?
I didn't have enough funds to purchase. That would have been a preference, but, too many dollars are required.
How, how long are we tied into this lease?
If one's a four-year, and one's a seven-year, I believe. Well, it's a 36 months on the, on the I boss and the four-year on the hardware. Short term on both of them.
Okay. Adam Clark? Ms. Taylor has a question. Hold on, Ms. Taylor.
And so, unless you confuse me and mistake me. Okay. And this may be a sidebar that Mr. West Bay will have to have with me as well. This information about this technology, don't we have a five-year technology plan? Do we have one? Is any of this embedded in this plan, and as a result, this is why you were making these recommendations now?
Yeah, I think this was in the plan a long way.
It's been planned all... Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor.
Do we have the building capacity to even, for you, that you were speaking to?
To use this technology? It's technology we're currently using, it's just replacing outdated equipment. And the I boss filter we're using there every single day, we've used it for the last year, it's what protects the internet from intrusion.
Okay. I guess my only concern is that it seems that our computers, our internet system is downward, it should be. And I just feel incredibly uncomfortable with keeping investing in technology, you know, in the path of the wherewithal, maybe of the condition of the buildings or whatever. It seems like we need to approach a holistic approach, to keep the internet up, and then talk about making that investment in technology.
Yeah, it would be good to discuss some specifics if you know certain situations where it's down, I guess, because we can address those, especially looking at particular situations, so.
Okay, I know it's an open high, they have this down a lot, a lot.
Okay.
Motion's made by Dr. Jones, seconded by Ms. Gray, Mr. Cervin. Ms. Gray.
Yes.
Mr. Bowman. Mrs. Taylor. Dr. Jones.
Yes.
Mrs. Pinkney.
Yes.
Mrs. Larson.
Yes.
Mr. Coleman.
Yes.
Mrs. Harris Mohammed.
I'm not answering the sort of question, I mean, if, when you're president, or you're staying, or you're going to vote against it, I'm not going to vote for you, but she's declining to vote.
Adam Clark?
Motion passes 7, 1, 1.
Thank you.
Item is 3.16, receive school board travel and district activity request. You had received requests this afternoon. Mr. Coleman is attending the G A L initiative, and that those funds will be reimbursed to R P S. And he is requesting to attend the M S B A annual conference in Lynchburg with an estimated cost of $526.13. Mrs. Harris Mohammed is requesting to attend the Women Education Leaders in Virginia Conference with an estimated cost of $238.59. She is estimating a cost for her November chat and chew of $248.16 for a total of $486.75. And Mrs. Taylor is requesting to attend the N W A C P Freedom Fund Gala and Award Program for a cost of $50. Yes, ma'am.
On our, right now, and this is just the M S B A, I think that actually, do you have my estimate cost for the V S B A conference?
Yes, that's included in your estimated cost for V S B A.
Okay, checking.
Ms. Lewis, she has a question.
I just had a question about the V S B A conference, Justin, what is that about?
That's their annual, big annual conference.
November 19th to 21st.
So we have a, right, Ms. Lewis, or?
Yes, you do. Okay, I'll, I'll...
All right, if we have a motion.
I have a question.
No, a question, hold on, Ms. Gray, Ms. Bowman, Ms. here.
Oh, sorry. I just have a point that I'd like to make, because I'm looking at the reports, and I think that it would be important for us to abide by whatever per diems and state or local hotel rates that there are. And I don't know that we are doing so. It doesn't look like it from the reports. But if there are guidelines that we're going by, do we know?
What's the question?
I, I do not know.
So what I'm asking is, when I travel for state business for my day job, there are set rates for one night in a hotel by region. And there are also federal rates for hotels in whatever region, and it caps at a certain amount, it's a government rate. Are we making sure we're utilizing either the city of Richmond, the state, or the federal hotel and per diem rates? Or are we just, because this is school board money, we're not abiding by that?
No, ma'am, we get, well, with the conferences, some of them do not give us the, do request for tax exempt, some of those have been granted, some have not. We go to the hotels where the conferences are, and those rates are preset.
Because, for instance, with the state, if I'm traveling to a conference, and that hotel doesn't offer the government rate, I'm required to stay at a hotel within proximity and travel to the conference.
There is no set rate, not in policy.
We have a law, and a policy regulation, policies.
I don't believe, and turning quickly to the travel section, there is no state, excuse me, no stated minimum or rate for lodging in your school board policy. I am aware that the state does that, and I'm not sure what the administration does, if they have a, if they have a set policy. if they have a, um, if they have a set policy, um, or set procedure for those rates. Hotel and lodging, if there is, if there is a standard, uh, rate similar to what the state has for lodging caps? Um, or is it where the conferences are, where, you know, you're reimbursing for that actual rate? Okay, so you all, your procedures don't have a state, a set guide?
It's the government rate.
It's the government rate?
Yes, on the reimbursement form, it's the government rate.
Okay, on the reimbursement rate, it's the government form?
It's so, um.
So, what does that mean, Mr. John?
John?
Travel reimbursement form, when we did the review of travel, if you look at the document, it requires us to use the government reimbursement rate. And, um, we have to also go out and look at the conference rate and decide whether or not that is a government rate. And you have to sign off to say the government rate on reimbursement form.
And that's with, specifically with federal, is that what you're talking about, with grants?
It's with any of the travels that we take. Um, if you recall, when we, when a travel audit was done by the, um, city auditor, there was one of the points that brought up about using state and government rates. And if you look at the reimbursement form that's online on Department of Finance website, you'll see that it requires us to use the government rate.
Okay, so, Ms. Lily, Ms. Lewis, myself, can we, um, I guess, try to come up with some kind of recommendation around this or suggestion of what people are doing in this area when we're going at?
Yes.
All right, thank you. All right, actually, Ms. Epps was next.
I, I'd like for the record to reflect that, you know, I'm going, I'm traveling. Um, and while being a former state and federal employee, I am aware that they do have guidelines. However, I was not aware with a, I, I was not made aware that whether or not our school system is following any of those guidelines. And so, in the event that this information gets for you, I don't want it to look like, oh, well, Ms. Epps just decided that she would go spend the night in a two-hundred-and-nineteen-dollar hotel room that was a part of a conference package.
Okay, thank you very much. Ms. Taylor?
I was gonna say that each day, at least one hotel that is, um, not a conference, you can spend, and in front of the venue itself, a little bit of consideration is present, um, to, 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 to.
Okay.
And just to make sure that some of the laws are changed, that.
All right, again, we're very own recommendation. Entire board have an opportunity to vote on, um, what we choose to use as our policy in this area.
But my previous question was with regard to the, uh, NAACP Freedom Fund Gala and Award Program?
I think there were questions on that.
Is, is the, I didn't get a chance to, that was gonna be my question, but then I was responding to something else. Um, if we choose to go to this, these, this fifty dollars, is there an opportunity that as a board, we can support the superintendent, um, being the guest speaker at this event? And this, uh, we agree that we buy a table?
Again, I think there will be something.
But these are, I guess, my more specific question is, if I choose to go, I have to spend fifty dollars out of my, unless I choose to pay personally, it comes out of my budget.
That's correct. And at this point, remember, that's all we have is our, we don't have any group forms.
Okay.
We just have the individual forms.
All right.
Okay? All right? Is there a motion on the floor?
Motion, uh, motion made by Ms. Harris Mahal, submitted by Ms. Taylor, Mr. Stern. Ms. Gray?
No.
Question? We, we are voting on the request, the entire package?
Yes.
The package of travel request that. It's the first page, right?
Yes.
First page, okay. That's what I'm asking. Okay.
Yes.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Harris Mahal?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Pinkney?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
If, if we're only talking this very first page, I can be, yes.
Okay, thank you. Motion passes now through. Next item is your closed session.
Okay.
Pursuant to the personnel exemption at two point two dash thirty-seven eleven eight one seven and twenty-nine of the Code of Virginia nineteen fifty as amended, I move that the school board of the City of Richmond convening closed session to one, discuss the assignment appointed of motion performance, demotion salaries this morning, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of the school board, or for discussion, consideration, or interview of prospective candidates for employment. Two, for consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members or consultants pertaining to actual or probable litigation, where such consultation or briefing in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the school board, and for consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by the school board regarding specifically legal matters, requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel. And, three, for discussion of the award of a public contract involving the expenditure of public funds, including interviews of bidders or offer, offerers, and discussion of the terms or scope of such contract, where discussion in open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public buyer.
Okay, colleagues, um, given to the intensity of this session, we're gonna need to go upstairs.